I'd like to call this meeting to order and we'll start with the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. McCucci. Mrs. Mitchell.
Here.
Mr. Akmanowicz.
Here.
Ms. Weed.
Here.
Mr. De Liberto.
Here.
And Mr. Klein.
Here. Okay, a couple of announcements. First, there was an executive session prior to the meeting to discuss the personnel matter. This meeting is being recorded by the Board Secretary. I'd also like to make just a quick announcement before we get this meeting underway. It won't take long. However, of course, today's a very important day in history. It's the 75th anniversary of D-Day. And I put a few thoughts together that I'd like to share with everybody. Putting history in perspective is powerful and moving. Today, President Trump and President Macron of France celebrated and honored the surviving veterans of World War II that were active participants in D-Day and the battles that followed. They also honored the thousands of fallen Allied troops who began the liberation of Europe and the victory over the Nazi regime that was very strong, very dug in, and very ready for the fight. Put yourself in their shoes. You were seventeen years old. You had volunteered only weeks earlier. A few weeks of basic training and then you were shipped over to England where the D-Day staging took place. You had no cellphone to call home. There were no final goodbyes to your mom, your brother, your sister, your father, or your wife. The weather was so bad they delayed the invasion for one day from June 5th to the 6th. On the 6th, the weather was still terrible, but they went anyway. Can you imagine what that was like? I could go on about that. I won't. Just know that on this day, seventy-five years ago, tens of thousands of Allied men and women fought to change the course of World War II and to defend the concept of being free and preserving liberty for all. It wasn't just about winning this battle or winning World War II. It was about the right of the human race to be free of tyranny and evil. Thank God these Allied forces were as brave and courageous as they were that day. Had they folded in the face of Nazi Germany, I promise you all, the life we live today would be very, very different. History can be a good teacher. Thank you. Next, we go to the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 23rd, 2019, meeting of the Board of School Directors of the Quakertown Community School District?
Sir, moved.
Mr. Anderson, second.
Second.
Mrs. Weed, discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to our first general public comment. Madam Secretary, has anybody signed up for comment?
Mr. Harvey.
Please state your name and area of residence, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Rich Harvey. I live in Doylestown. I want to thank you all for inviting me here tonight. I'm the administrator for the Bucks County Agricultural Land Preservation Program. And I'm here to speak to you tonight, your board, for you to consider the possibility of freezing your school taxes on preserved farms in your district. Just a brief background on our program. We've had a program here in the county since 1989. We've preserved 221 farms to date. We're up to 17,405 acres. And it's a very popular program. So, tonight, I'd just like to run this by you for your consideration. So, the vehicle that would allow you to do this would be Act 153, which was adopted by the Pennsylvania Commonwealth in 1996. Basically, that allows school districts to freeze school taxes at the time a farm is preserved. So, that would mean, if you decided to do this, that the twenty-seven farms that we have already preserved in your district would have their school taxes frozen at the time if you decided to pass this resolution. Any new farms that came forward would be, the school taxes would be frozen at the time of preservation. So, I just wanted to run this by you this evening. And a couple other things. The county currently freezes all the farms, the 221 farms that we preserved throughout the county. The only farms that qualify for this program are farms that are preserved through the county's farmland program. There've been a lot of farms preserved throughout the county through different organizations. But the only ones that qualify for this program are the ones that are preserved through the county. So, I wanted to make that clear. The other thing is, the, how does the benefit, what are the benefits to the school district in adopting Act 153? Well, as I had mentioned, the school district still gets revenues from the farms, but they're frozen in time. So, the amount of money that they might have if they didn't adopt the freeze is minuscule compared to your total budget. I worked with Palisades School District, and I think we've preserved twice as many farms in that district. And I think the revenue that they lose every year due to that freeze is about $50,000. It's not much. So, the school district still gets taxes, but they're frozen. So, it benefits the school district because a lot of the farms that we preserved, you know, probably could go into subdivisions. And as everybody knows, that's a strain on school districts with the costs. The costs that they get, the revenue that they get don't equal the costs that they put out, especially with school districts. If they have to build new schools, it's really important. So, it keeps costs down for the school district. It's an investment in your future. That amount that you're giving up is an investment in the future. It'll keep costs down if those subdivisions weren't built. It also preserves the rural character of Bucks County, especially up here in Upper Bucks County. I mean, we have most of our farms here in the county right now, so, up here. So, this is a really important thing for Upper Bucks County. All the farms are preserved in perpetuity, so there's no buybacks. All the farms that we preserved will be there forever. So, they will never be, you know, bought back or anything like that. So, that's something that's done in perpetuity. And how does Act 153 help the farmers? Well, it reduces the financial burdens on the farmers. Everybody knows how hard it is to farm now. And especially with taxes, the cost of input for their farms. Everything's going up with the cost of the products and how much they're getting. So, school real estate taxes is a big thing. And a lot of times, it makes a difference to a farmer if he's thinking about preserving his farm in the program. So, it's something to think about. And this, Act 153 is overwhelmingly supported by the county commissioners and all the residents in Bucks County. Finally, what are the benefits of farmland preservation to Bucks County? Each one of our farms provides fresh food and produce for our residents. You don't have to truck in, you know, our produce and food from other parts of the country. They provide scenic vistas, protects our agricultural heritage, provides jobs, and supports our local economy. The agricultural economy in this county is about $77 million right now. Provides hundreds of jobs, preserves our environment, our wildlife habitat, and prime soils. Promotes large tracts of continuous farms up here in Upper Bucks County. And it helps reduce the cost to municipalities and school districts. So, again, as I had mentioned, it's supported by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Bucks County Commissioners, all the farmers, and most, and all the residents. Now, I did provide a handout for you, and it shows a map of all the farms that are preserved in your school district here. And there are about twenty-seven right now. So, this is, just shows you where they're located. And one of them in particular, I've included in this handout, is the Bonk Farm, which was located right next to Richland Town Borough. And that had water and sewer right next to it. So, I provided a picture of that farm and then an aerial overlay of what that farm would have looked like if it had a hundred houses built on top of it. So, as you can see, you know, the preservation of farm is a winning situation for school districts. It saves money for them in the long run. Other school districts have done it. Palisades, Central Bucks, New Hope-Sober, and Council Rock. Sometimes it makes a difference to our farmers if they're thinking of preserving their farm. So, I just wanted to share those thoughts with you tonight. And I'd be happy to just get that out there. And if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
What is the request for us this evening?
No requests, just for, it's just a general consideration. Something, the possibility that you might want to do this in the future. It would enable, it would enact, you'd have to enact a resolution eventually, I guess.
So, the district needs to pass a resolution?
Yes.
To honor this?
Yes.
There's already farms in Quakertown area in the district that are participating in this program, but they're not benefiting from such a program because we don't have such a resolution as?
That's correct. We've preserved twenty-seven farms so far. But they don't, they don't have the benefits of the school taxes being frozen. So, if you did decide to pass a resolution, then that would happen.
So, the idea is we would, we would adopt Act 153 as a school district?
Yes, yes, sir.
It would be retro, well, not retroactive, but moving forward for these existing?
It would be. Preservationists. It would be forward for any new farms that we preserve and then retroactive for all the ones that are already preserved. So, there are twenty-seven there now. And any new ones that came into the program, we would, it would take effect.
Those people that are in it now aren't going to go back to their original date and get a refund? I mean, it's going to be, retroactive means backwards.
It would be, I'm sorry, it would be, it would take effect when the resolution is passed.
Do you have any figures for what the taxes would be lost, what the?
Well, I only have what Palisades has, and they have twice as many farms preserved. And they estimate it's about $50,000 that they lose a year.
And as part of the program, are you required to farm, you farm, or are you paid not to farm? As we do on the national level?
No, you're required to farm. Okay, all the farms in the program are in perpetuity and have to remain in agriculture.
Dr. Harner, did we do an analysis on this by chance?
No, sir, but anticipation of this in Finance Committee, we've had this as a topic two or three times. Zach, do you have anything further to add?
No, we did discuss it in Finance. In preparation, we knew Mr. Harvey would be requesting to speak. I think my recommendation would be to kick it over to the Finance Committee to dive into so we understand exactly what the financial impact, pros and cons of this would be for our district, and then report back to the board as a whole afterwards.
Okay. So, probably what it is, though, is we're not actually going to lose any money. We're just not going to get any more from said properties.
Right.
Which, you know, standing at the polls recently, you get a lot of people who are no kids in the district anymore. They're, you know, they've got farms, they've got, you know, they're working for a living. And they give you an earful about our taxes, that's for damn sure. So, and some even say, couldn't you just freeze my taxes? So, I didn't know you could. So, thank you.
It's only for the farms. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity.
The thing is that you would, if you were choosing to go down this path, it wouldn't be effective until your next school year because you're going to be adopting a budget in your village now. So, your resolution would be adopted between now and next April-June.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Harvey.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else signed up for public comment? Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak at this time? Dr. Harner has something he would like to announce, please.
Alan, have your family come on up. This is just an impromptu thing. I asked Alan to bring his family in. Alan Hawley has been working back in the technology office, his wife Anne?
Yes.
And Nicholas, son Nicholas?
Yes.
Son Nicholas? He's been working back here in the technology office, or that's where his desk is. But he spends all of his time out in buildings, or most of his time. In the summer months, he rebuilds all the Chromebooks and other computers as they get turned back in and get redistributed. But Alan's been working for us for nine years. He's moving on down to join his brother-in-law? Sister-in-law down in, the whole family's moving down to Virginia. And I just wanted to recognize him for his faithful service to you, this community, to all of our students and our buildings and teachers. He's just there, all the, I see him everywhere. And, and so, I just wanted to recognize him and just give him a shout out. Would you like to say something?
I'd like to thank everybody for your kindness and patience. I just want to say that it's a wonderful school district here. I enjoyed my time here. You have excellent teachers, principals, a great board here that cares for the students. And it shows by the amount of stuff that I prepare, you know. So, I just want to say thank you. And I'll miss everybody here. And I'll miss working in this wonderful school district. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The best of luck to you and your family in your new, you know, position down in Virginia. It's a great state, so.
It's Williamsburg.
Wow.
I'm jealous. I love Williamsburg.
All right, next on the agenda is our student representative report. And tonight, we're joined by, and I hope I pronounce this correctly, Melissa Nong. A little bit about you, if I may, because I have some things in front of me that people might like to know. You're the vice president of the Key Club. You also are a National Honor Society treasurer. You're a national merit qualifier. You're a part of the Mandarin Club. Tennis team captain. Awesome. I love tennis. I used to play in college.
Nice.
You teach piano. And here's the kicker, you took six AP courses this year? Wow.
That's impressive.
Very impressive.
Thanks.
Okay, the floor is yours.
Hello. Thank you for having me here to represent the student body at the high school. To start off, over Memorial Day weekend, Casey Lambiness finished ninth in the high jump. And my senior classmate, Adrienne Redder, earned a fourth-place state medal in the discus and was eighth against worldwide competition. May 26th, eight hundred walkers, runners, and volunteers gathered for the steps for Stettler to honor one of our teachers battling cancer, Mr. Stettler, and helped raise over $39,000 for him and his medical bills. I know the Panther Marching Band was preparing a lot for Memorial Day. I'd see my friends memorizing their music during, like, lunch and then marched in the parade. Our baseball and softball teams had a good season. Both made it to district playoffs. Softball won their first two games, but lost to Springfield. Additionally, some of our senior baseball players are continuing to play when they go to college. The student-teacher kickball game mentioned last time happened. It ended in a tie, though personally, I think the students won. Something went amiss with the scores. I think it was the wind. The senior prom was a huge success. I heard a lot of positive things, saw a lot of posts on Instagram. My senior friends had a lot of fun describing it as one of the best nights of their lives. Now, I hear a lot of excitement about the senior trip to Florida. They left today, which was nice. I'm excited to do that next year. The only thing was that some of us feel that it's a little unfair that some of the seniors were threatened, that they weren't going to be able to walk at graduation if they weren't going to come to school, to attend class while the others were at the trip. This made the senior trip kind of feel like an award for, like a reward for those who could afford the trip. So, I think it would make sense for those who couldn't afford the trip to be able to also take off on those days as their own senior trip. Outdoor school with the middle schoolers was phenomenal. I remember outdoor school being a highlight of my middle school career. And I definitely say that the high school counselors play a big role in that. So, I'm glad that we got to connect with the middle schoolers still. Thank you to Senor Soto for including Quakertown in one of the thirteen schools that attend and participated in the student forums led by the Bucks County Intermediate Unit. These forums served as a platform for student representatives from each school in the district to discuss events in their community and to hopefully inspire other districts as well. This year, we had Paige Mott, Hannah LeBonde, Jolly Fisher-Egpe, and Jake Burton represent QCHS. They were able to learn and bring new ideas back to the high school for further discussion and possible implementation. They were very thankful for the opportunity and would love for it to continue in the coming years. Additionally, though, they wish there was a better way to present information to the school and district as currently, ideas are too often just put aside for future discussion. Camp Nydig is coming up, June 14th, the last day of school, yay, to June 17th. Big thank you to the Rotary Club for giving us this opportunity to attend the camp and hone our leadership skills through interactions with guest speakers, different problem-solving activities, and leadership skill-building workshops. I think this is a wonderful chance as we get to interact and collaborate with other like-minded leaders inside the district to develop important skills such as decision-making, process analyzing, and teamwork in a hands-on manner that would help us now and then later in the future. Recently, we've implemented a school swipe-in system for attendance. The first three days have gone okay. Today was definitely better than the first two days. So, it is improving. People who drive have an easier time, while bus takers, not so much. I can tell you that the majority of students do not like it. Of course, though, any immense change, even if positive change, is usually met with some initial resistance. So, time will tell if the benefits will outweigh the negatives and if we're going to accept it. My hope is that it will continue to improve so that it grows into something effective and not just like inconvenience. AP students are going in to take their second round of final exams, or really, third. So, what happens is, we have our finals before the actual AP exams in preparation for the real thing. Then we take the exams, and previously, last year, that was it. However, now, incredibly, we are required to have more finals during these last weeks. I definitely don't mean to be disrespectful, but we AP students find this to be unnecessary and not academically valuable. I know the concern is that students will either skip school or that money used to keep the school running these last days is wasted because students aren't using their time productively. They aren't learning. Okay, so, school is supposed to be student-centered, to educate us and provide a safe place for students to discover. It's not supposed to be an institution where students are pushed to the point where they don't want to learn anymore just to satisfy adult concerns. I feel that the concern for our mental health, for our emotional safety, and for our physical well-being stops where grades, parents, and schoolwork starts. And I'm not saying that this is how adults feel, like, I know you guys care about us. But sometimes, that's just how it feels. You might hear this and think we have to fix motivation or teach about taking care of ourselves or time management, but that's not it. We're fully aware of how to take care of ourselves, how much sleep we should be getting, and how to manage our time, and that our teachers are amazing. But however, as grades are such a huge importance now, AP scores are important, GPA is too. It's hard, it's kind of hard to relax to know that your grades are still on the line. APs are accelerated classes, so we learn the whole course before we take the exam. So, there's nothing really pressing to learn right after. And the work we do after exams, many of us are not going to be invested in producing our very best work. Not because we're lazy, but because it's just unfair that we still get so much of it. Personally, I took six APs and I got As in all of my classes, so I'm not like an unmotivated student. And I was hoping that I could relax and just study like other things, like subject tests and other interests. We could spend the rest of the year on maybe interactive or interesting topics that we haven't discovered, like, talked about a lot yet. Like, today was the 75th anniversary of the invasion of Normandy. And that's what we did in AP Euro today, so that was fine. It's not a lack of motivation. It's just being tired after a whole year of pushing, and even the most motivated students need a break. I think the best way to address this problem is to start the school year earlier and end the school year earlier. And that would also help with exam readiness as we have like the snow days and things, and that's a disadvantage for us in comparison with the Western and Southern schools. And I know every single time I hear this, the first thing I hear is that the parents would go mad. The vacations, there's still the same amount of summer days for vacation. So, it's just a matter of priority. Is it more important to tend to the future generations like health and success or to take the trip to like Bermuda in like late August? If we can't do that, at least don't require the AP students to take a third set of finals or like 100-point projects at the end of the year. Another concern is the excessive technology censorship. I understand it. We don't want students to search inappropriate things in class. However, the technology censorship definitely gets in the way sometimes. Websites useful for research get blocked because it's like maybe a blog, like, I know for Key Club, we have like a website that we use, and it got blocked multiple times and then unblocked and then blocked again. And that was kind of an inconvenience. And/or it contains a bad word. Like, I remember for a debate, it was recent, about dominance in relationships. We were searching about power in same-sex relationships, but the search was blocked. We searched instead for same-gender relationships, and it worked. We found a way around that one, but sometimes you don't find a way around. And the level of website blocking has increased from when I was in middle school to now in high school, as if the trust level decreased from when I was 12 to now, when I'm 17. Furthermore, I don't think it's beneficial for learning if we continue to block things. For example, in history class, if we're going to learn about war, if we're going to learn about genocide or other similarly heavy topics, if videos of these things are blocked from being shown in class or from like website discussions. I could be wrong, but I think some of these things are important in order to understand the gravity of it. It's important to hear other opinions and to post about opinions and to get feedback. We don't need protecting from horrible videos or blog posts. We need to see and read and learn about it in a safe environment. My last thing is about diversity. I really almost chickened out about saying anything about this because I didn't want to sound like I was playing victim. I was just an observer. I wasn't like part of it, but it was in my circle of friends. I'm not sure if people saw it, and I don't even know if what I saw was right. But with schedules coming out recently, it reminded my friends about this selection. I'm going to be vague about it because I don't want to point fingers. But many of my friends, and one in particularly, applied for this opportunity. She's a minority. She gets all As. She has a near-perfect attendance, is motivated and passionate about this opportunity. There are also males that applied for this, too. All the people, save for one, around 12 to 28 then, were white and female. Some of them who got the position did not have all As nor perfect attendance. I'm not trying to call any of them like, I'm not trying to, just to clarify, I'm not trying to like badmouth any of them because I think that all of the people who applied for this opportunity deserved it because it showed, by applying, it already showed that they were invested in this opportunity, invested in their future. So, in an ideal society, all of them would have been able to get the position. But it didn't happen, so. Obviously, grades and attendance shouldn't be deciding factors. However, I feel if someone is getting Ds and another is getting As, that should have played a role in the decision. The administrators who decide don't know the students and don't know their work ethic, whether they sleep in class, whether they bring their personal issues to class, whether, if they're like overly emotional in class, whether they procrastinate or not. So, I feel that the teachers should then play a deciding factor in the initial stages of the selection because the teachers know the students. And if we want to give the lesser-performing students like the opportunity, then I definitely see the benefits in opening this opportunity to more people, maybe all the people who apply, possibly. I understand, coming from me, it sounds biased as I'm a minority, but I'm just confused with what qualifies for such opportunities. Because if it was for a level of achievement, then I think greater diversity was possible. Anyway, thank you for inviting me here. Thank you for listening to my somewhat radical ideas. I'm sorry, I didn't really talk about vaping or those kind of issues. I didn't want to seem like redundant, you know? So, there's only so much radical for one night. Thank you to my friend Jolly for getting me here to sit in for him since he couldn't make it. So, yeah, I hope that what I said had some value in it and some of it is considered. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your report and for your insights. It's all interesting for us to hear, and it's all important.
Speaking of, let's talk a little bit about some of those things, if you don't mind. Do you have a minute? May I? I'm curious, there's a fee for the seniors to go on the senior trip?
Mm-hmm. It's $1,400-ish.
It was about $1,400.
Yeah, $1,400.
And those days of school where the students were paid to go on the trip, the other students did have to go and come into class?
What?
They had to come to school those days.
Yeah, they had to come to class those days.
And it's your opinion and maybe the opinion of some others that it feels like a tax?
Yeah, a reward for those who could afford it while others who couldn't just had to come to school.
So, question, do you still have the opportunity to earn money towards your senior trip?
There are volunteer opportunities, but there's also slots.
But you can, you could earn money towards paying down that, and some kids can go? But you could earn money towards paying down that, and some kids can go for free if they volunteer a lot, correct?
Yes, but it's first come, first served, so some of us still couldn't.
So it's not for every, like every senior doesn't have a crack at that?
No. There's a set number of volunteers possible, like the snack stand that we do at the football games, I'm pretty sure there's only like six allowed per game. So it's, and it's definitely not enough to cover 1,014, $1,400.
Okay. Thank you for telling us that. I appreciate it, I was unaware. I have some other questions, and you know, I really want to-
While you're on that topic of the trip, could we clarify some information on the students who were missed school? Because I think there was a comment there that she had made, and I wanted to-
Please.
... from Dr. Hopper, who's been standing in and helping out with Dr. Vinity being gone, so she knows a little bit about attendance.
So we did have a number of students who submitted a family trip request form that they were doing something else during these days, which we approved. The issue, I believe, that you might be referring to is specific to students who have already missed more than 10% of the school year, and therefore, we are not allowing them to miss these days because our written policy is that the number of days that you need to miss or that you can miss before you're not allowed to participate in graduation is a set number. So for the students who are seniors but who have had regular attendance, they have chosen not to attend school right now, and they're not being penalized for that. Now, of course, we don't encourage that, we'd love them to come to school, but the students who were specifically talked to, which I know because I was there, specifically talked to about needing to come, it's because they've already missed a significant portion of the school year and therefore-
They need those days to graduate, according to-
Correct. So it's not every student, it's not every student who didn't go on the trip must come or none of them can graduate. That's certainly not the message. It was a targeted message to students who had already missed over the acceptable percentage of days and therefore needed to be present or else they wouldn't meet our state requirements. So I just wanted to clarify that while we want all of them here, the students who received that letter or the letter about not going to prom, that's because they exceeded the days that they could miss.
Thank you for explaining that.
Thank you for clarifying. I wasn't aware of that either, so.
What if they missed too many days then before the trip? Would they not be able to go on the trip either? So we do, yeah, there are policies in place in terms of whether or not you, both disciplinary infractions can result in you not being able to go on the trip, and the parents do sign that they understand that if it's past the point of getting your money back and for some reason you're not allowed to go on the trip, that you forfeit that money. And we do try to have, it's an optional experience for students to go on their senior trip, it's not a mandated by any sense, which is why it's not paid for by the district, obviously, but we do try to have, you know, different work opportunities like we shared and candy sales and, you know, all kinds of things to help students fundraise starting in ninth grade to hopefully offset the cost for as many children as possible so that they can attend.
So is it an excused absence, I guess, is what I'm asking?
It is. It's a school trip, if, it counts as a school trip, which is an excused absence for students who meet the requirements to be able to go.
But we also allow people to have excused absences for family trip in place of the senior trip?
So at any time, a family can fill out that request form. It does seem that a lot of senior families decided to go on a trip during this time, just like the other week during the kickball game. I think every orthodontist and doctor's appointment was booked. I had so many early dismissal notices to go to the orthodontist, I've never seen so many in one afternoon. But, you know, as long as they fill it out and they're within the timeline and the dates and they have an educational experience, we approved it.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't check to see if they actually went to the museum today, but I hope that they did and I hope they had a great experience there.
Okay. That's good. That's good to know, too, to take back to, I think, you know, the seniors for next year, maybe if they want to take a different type of trip, they wouldn't have to go to school those days, right at the end of the year.
Ms. Ng, I don't want to, I don't want to come across as criticizing your speech because you put out a lot of topics you're very passionate about, you have strong opinions of them, but this might be a learning experience. And by what I'm gonna say, the school trip, obviously, you had an understanding of a situation and you just didn't have all the information.
Yeah.
Okay. And I understand, but that's true for a couple of the comments you gave tonight. I don't want to go into them here, the AP one is one, but there's other things you have opinions on, strong feelings on. I would ask that before you say this has to change, you do a little bit more discussion with the administration, your principals, your teachers, and find out why these rules, regulations, policies are in place. Because I think you'll find that a lot of them exist for really important reasons, even though the students might think they're silly or annoying or make things, like make like difficult, there's reasons that you're not aware of that if you speak out, you might, you know, and again, I'm not trying to be critical, I'm just saying there's more to most stories than just one side.
I'm gonna disagree a little bit. I loved every minute of it because it shows the perception of what's out there. And bravo to you for speaking out and speaking for the students. Even if things may be a misunderstanding, I think for us as a board, my reaction to you would be, hey, let me follow up with you to maybe help correct some of those misunderstandings so we can work together rather than criticize you for maybe a misunderstanding. So bravo to you. Probably one of my favorite, most, you know, the best student representative report that I've heard thus far being on the board, very informational. I really appreciated it. Thank you.
In fact, I think you did such a wonderful job. I have a whole list of questions here, not just that one that we only got to so far. And the AP classes, I'm so happy that you brought that up to our attention once again because I think, my, the first thing I read was six AP classes, he may have even heard me, I said, "I didn't even know somebody could take that many classes that are AP at one time."
Possible.
I know it's possible, but it's just the amount of intense work. And so, you know, really, what you've pointed out to us, you know, you have a lot of pressure on your shoulders, and you managed to carry straight As, which is absolutely phenomenal. Congratulations to you. But you're an exception to the rule, right? And I mean, having, carrying that much of a weight load with two and three exams, I mean, someone's gonna have to explain that to me offline here, you know, later on. I just can't even understand how there could be three exams. Like, what? Why is there three exams for one class?
You mean three finals?
Oh, three finals.
Right, for one class.
Yeah, so before the real AP exam that we take for like college credits for college, to submit the scores to college, we have like an in-class final for, like that's our final grade.
Report card grade versus the college transfer grade.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And then the third one is just, yeah.
Well, thank you for your patience.
But wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I think we gotta go back. I think we need some clarification, David, because I think, I think you would find that actually you don't have to take the AP college one. That's a choice that a student would make. So if you wanted to, it costs you money, you apply, you pay, then you could take it, and if you pass it, then you get your college credits for it. But you don't have to take that.
Okay.
So it's an elective one.
That's fair.
So take that off the table. So now we're down to two. So what's the difference in the other two?
Sure. So we have two things going on here with any AP class. One is that the AP class that's written by the College Board requires a certain curriculum and a certain standard for the students to perform if they choose to take that test because it's a national test. Then we have our obligation as a school district to meet state standards and requirements both for the curriculum that we offer and also for the diploma that you all sign and present to the students at the end of the year. So while we do our best to front-load the content that's required for any AP exam or test prior to them taking the test so that, I don't think that came out correctly, but we try to get the curriculum that's going to be on the test in front of them before that May date. So we front-load everything. A couple of years ago, it was a request of the students to have the final exam when this first came out, it actually went through the Education Committee, to make the final exam prior to the AP test as a practice. It's a formatted similar to what the students will see on the AP test, it's the same content, and the idea was to put that in front of them prior to taking the test so they would have some sort of practice. So we made that accommodation. However, the School Board has voted for us to put final exams back into place at the high school, and they happen during a block of time, and every student is required to take one. Those final exams take a different look for most students, they have similar content. Some teachers choose to make them more project-based, some teachers choose to select content that is covered from May until June so that they can put, you know, some more information in front of the students. All of those exams have been vetted by our office to make sure that they then meet their requirements both of the Board and of the state. So for some students who are in an AP class, they do often feel, and we hear a lot, that when the AP test is over, they feel like their year is done, and I can understand that because that's a big culminating event. But in terms of the school district business and the curriculum side of things, the school year goes until June 14th, and there's still content and important, you know, things to talk about in the class from the first week of May until June. So we don't view those six weeks as lost instruction, we think it's a good opportunity to have further conversation. And for students who take multiple AP exams, it is a little bit of a struggle sometimes because they've been building to those first two weeks of May, and they sit for those exams, which are half a day long, most of them are at least three hours long, it's a very rigorous exam. And I can personally see why that would feel as though your year is done. But then we take the national exam part out of it and we go back to the school year calendar, and that's a valuable amount of time. If you think about the percentage of time students are in school talking about six weeks more or four weeks depending on when you take the test, we want to make sure that high-quality instruction is still happening during that time, and that would include a culminating exam, so.
So I guess you could make the first exam option.
Last one, last thing, sir. If you remember from your time in the Education Committee, the Board heard from students that they didn't feel they were prepared for college because they didn't take final exams. And so I know, understand AP students are taking exams, but the Board passed a policy back 2014, 2015 that required, and it came through from the Education Committee, Mr. Anderson, you were the chair, that said that every student has to take a final exam. So that's, so it started at this level for that third exam.
Yeah, so we could easily, would make it optional to take that first one. If you don't want to practice, you don't need to practice because that's on you. And then just take the one final, final. But I get it, you want to be done early, too bad.
So there's other things that I wanted to talk about, and I just want to thank you for bringing up other things like the diversity issue that you brought up. We probably don't have time to get into discussion at length about that as we probably deserve to, as well as the excessive technology censorship. I think that's good for everybody to hear, especially the people on this board. Many things you brought up tonight, we don't get to hear, so thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Hope you substitute again.
One more quick question. Do you regret six AP classes? No?
No.
You're a rock star.
What's your future gonna look like? What do you want to do?
I want to be a doctor.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah. I'm trying to go to this university, and so I only took, there was only one AP offered in ninth grade and two in 10th grade because I had band class, so I couldn't take that third AP in 10th grade, so I'm just loading up just so they can see, like my GPA is higher and I'm taking rigorous classes.
Well, good luck to you, I think you'd make a fine doctor.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
All right, we'll move, and thank you for your report again. Feel free if you need to study for any more tests or anything, that you can leave the meeting if you choose, or you can stay, it's up to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to Standing Committee reports, we have the Quaker Town Community Education Foundation, Mr. Jackson.
Nothing to say, we meet next week.
Short and sweet, thank you. All right, that brings us to the President's Report, and tonight we have a report of Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent results. Dr. Harner, I believe you have some information you would like to share? Or is that later?
That's later.
I'm sorry, sir. Okay. The Board has completed the evaluation of the Superintendent as required and has rated the Superintendent as proficient plus for the 2018-2019 school year. The Superintendent in conjunction with this Board has completed the evaluation of the Assistant Superintendent as required and has rated the Assistant Superintendent distinguished for 2018-2019. The Superintendent in conjunction with this Board has completed the evaluation of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning as required and has rated the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning as distinguished for the 2018-2019 year.
God, did we use names?
Well, your Superintendent is Dr. William Harner, your Assistant Superintendent is Nancy Anne Edwards, and the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning is Dr. Lisa Hoffman. All part of that transparency thing we try and practice. Okay, that brings us to the public comment on fiscal items being presented for a vote this evening. Is there any public comment on the fiscal items being presented? Okay, we'll move on to the fiscal agenda. We need a motion to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2019-2020 as presented, and this will be a roll-call vote. We also will be approving tax resolution for the 2019-2020 school year, which is also a roll-call vote. So you all have all the information on Board docs with all of the budgetary things that we've been discussing for the last few months. So we're looking for a motion to approve the final budget for fiscal year 2019-2020. This includes commitment of fund balance from the General Fund for the Capital Projects for 2019-2020 with the amount to be determined by the administration following the completion of the annual audit. Fund balance above 8% of the operating budget will be committed to a capital, or to the capital. So do I have a motion to approve the budget for year 2019-2020 as presented? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Akmanowicz, seconded by Ms. Mitchell. Okay, no discussion. Madam Secretary, this is a roll-call vote.
Mr. Anderson?
I approve.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. De Liberto?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Eight to one, motion passes.
Next is approve the tax resolution for 2019-2020, which is in conjunction with the budget. Do I have a motion to approve the annual tax resolution for the year 2019-2020?
So moved.
Mr. Jackson, second.
Second.
Ms. Weed, discussion. Seeing no signs of discussion, Madam Secretary, this is also a roll-call vote.
Can we talk about this for a second? Hold on, I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I guess I'm a little unclear. Is this just a formality of the previous vote? Okay, thank you.
We have to give the tax increase.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. There was nothing I was missing in here.
We're just approving the tax increase.
Okay, thank you. There's a lot of legal, like, anyway. Go ahead.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Akmanowicz?
Yes.
Ms. Weed?
Yes.
Mrs. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McCucci?
Yes.
Mr. De Liberto?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
No.
Motion passes, eight to one.
Eight to one. Okay, this brings us to the fiscal consent agenda. On to fiscal consent agenda tonight is to approve the contract with Advanced Protection Company for 2019-2020, approve the 2019-2020 cyber liability insurance policy, improve the 2019-2020 insurance package policy renewal, approve the 2019-2020 technology lease with Univest Capital, Inc. Next is authorization for budget transfers beyond the 2018-2019 school year. Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal consent agenda as presented? So moved. Mr. Akmanowicz, second. Mr. Jackson, discussion.
I just had a question on the security services agreement, where it says number
of agents per shift and location of agents. Does that just mean, when it says to be determined, is that just dependent on the event? It's not like an open, okay?
Yes, it's typically the athletic director would, would call that been arranged for certain levels of, of security guards, for lack of a better term, at the football game, basketball game, things of that nature.
Any other questions? All those in favor of the fiscal consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Next is public comment on the facilities consent agenda. No public comment for the facilities consent agenda. On the facilities consent agenda, we have award the Sixth Street sidewalk bid to MNC General Contractors, approve the Quakertown Borough Development Agreement for Nidegg Elementary School, approve the Declaration of Restrictions and Covenants for Nidegg Elementary School, approve Verizon easements for Nidegg Elementary School, and approve the three-year planned maintenance agreement with Emergency Systems Service Company. Do I have a motion to approve the facilities consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Mr. Anderson, is there a second? Second. Okay, I'll give that to Mr. Akmanowicz. Discussion.
Are any of these items, well, I guess, the first one, is the first one part of the million-dollar improvements? Thank you.
Yes.
I mean, this isn't on the agenda, but how did the buildings fare with all the rain? Was there, I heard there was leaks at Trum and the Strayer. Was that, were those leaks year-round?
Rob, would you answer?
Correct, we did have numerous leaks at Trum, but were some of them were covered under warranty?
And the ones that were under warranty, are they corrected and done, or has this been an ongoing issue all, all year?
They were there, it did address some of them, but I don't know if they got them all.
When did the problems start, and when do you think it'll be fixed?
First leaks over time that we have been addressing. Here, I would say a little bit next week. Hopefully be fixed up.
So the roof was leaking from the very beginning, it was fixed? Is that kind of what you're saying?
There has been several weeks since it has been replaced. But some of those were from the flashing areas that were not replaced, and that's the original problem.
Okay. And how about Strayer?
Strayer would have some repairs.
Okay. Sir, can, can we assume there's no actual structural damage to the building after all these leaks, after all these years? It seems like Trumbarsville's been battling with this leaky roof thing going on a few years now.
Correct, you could actually see in Trum, as well, the metal deck on top of the drop ceiling.
Should we have realized that the flashing was an issue at the same time we realized that the roof was an issue?
That's tough. That would be tough to determine. Getting into that, you're getting into driver's struggle material that keeps it going together. All that, that would be a...
Yeah. The issue to me isn't the cost necessarily. The issue is the fact that we needed to fix the leaks. The roof was brought up as the problem that was leaking. If it turned out to be the flashing in addition to the leak, should we not have known that and should it not have been brought to the Board that the total cost was the roof and the flashing?
We took the advice for ProCom, which was the service that did the... Dean, that's it.
So maybe to clarify, the original project at Trumbarsville, the leaks there had nothing to do with, they're two separate issues, I think, is the easiest way to say that. They're two separate leaking issues.
Was it the first time we've had that issue for the separate issue, I guess?
Actually, some of the leaks are coming from, were not replaced. Kitchen roof, we have a black area.
Do we think it's the same issue with the actual design structure of the roof, or something separate, entirely different?
That's you.
So we don't, we're not sure, maybe? More, more, stay tuned, basically? Okay.
Do we have to replace the roof if that was, if that wasn't really what was even leaking?
Now, the area that they replaced, the general area is repair. I would say now the average, probably 9% leaks are from flashing and or just...
Just be thankful you don't own property with that much roof.
Right.
Okay, any other questions or discussions? All those in favor of the facilities consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to public comment on the human resources items being presented for a vote I see no public comment for the human resources. On the human resources consent agenda, we have appoint trustee to the Buxton Montgomery County Healthcare Consortium, professional staff, support staff, summer maintenance, technology, substitute staff. Do I have a motion to accept the human resources consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Mitchell, second.
Second.
Ms. Weed, discussion.
Second.
I already did, Rod.
I apologize.
You were too busy talking.
I was looking at something very intently.
Are there drones on this?
Okay, seeing no discussion. All those in favor of accepting the human resource consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to public comment on the Office of Teaching and Learning items being presented tonight for a vote. I see no request for public comment. The Office of Teaching and Learning consent agenda is as follows. Approve contract with the College Board for the year 2019-2020. It's a short one. Do I have a motion to accept the Office of Teaching and Learning consent agenda as presented? So moved. Mr. Akmanowicz, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Jackson? Awesome. Discussion.
Second.
Okay, seeing no more seconds. All those in favor of accepting the Office of Teaching, of Learning, and Consent Agenda, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to public comment on policies and program items being presented for a vote Okay, policy and programs consent agenda consists of acknowledged completion of the 2018-2019 Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent Goals, which are at 96.6%, approve the 2019 Special Education Leadership Summer Academy for four PPS team members to attend, approve the contract with the Buxton Academy for the 2019-2020 school year, and approve contract with Lakeside Youth Services for the 2019-2020 school year. Contract summary is in Board docs. Do I have a motion to accept the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda as presented?
So moved.
Ms. Weed, second.
I'll second it.
Mr. Anderson, discussion.
Quick question. Jeff, are you staying with us after?
The goals discussion?
Right.
Yes.
Because I want to get some clarification just on completion versus, I think, hopefully we'll get a better handle for the upcoming year. Some kind of method to measure performance based on, not necessarily if it, if it was completed, but was it completed well? Not to say that it, it wasn't, just, just some, I think, refinement of that protocol.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of accepting the Policy and Programs Consent Agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, this brings us to the Board discussion for 2019-2020 District and Superintendent Sir, this is what I believe you have some information for us on.
We're going to get our own copy of this, just by hand, people.
Gary.
Thank you.
These are... Thank you, sir.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
After, after our Saturday retreat, if you recall, on this past Saturday, when we did our annual evaluation for the Assistant Superintendents and myself, we got together and from the, all those conversations on Saturdays from our evaluation instruments that you, that were provided and summarized by Mr. Templeton, the team got together and spent the last work, a few working days, working diligently to approach our goals a different way. So what you see in one document, the real skinny document, this is a two, two-pager, which is what we've done in the past, is put these out there saying, hey, these are high bars to jump over, these are what we wanted to do. And if you can see up, if you can, Joe, you can expand my webs, my personal page on the administration website, if you do, on the left-hand column. You can see, over there, we have our theory of action, which has been basically the strategies that we're, that we started out with, the big picture, and then each year we've had goals and goals reported, and what the goals were up front, and, and the, all the metrics that were measuring it in the past, and, and we've been very consistent with our format. This year, we wanted to take it a different approach, taking your questions, taking some of your concerns over the goals and the different domains as an example discipline. We talk about discipline quite a bit, and, and we're, and we're getting a lot of feedback on that, and we, we'll take you through that with asking you for some specific questions. So what we know across, we have five domains here, major goal areas. We've added, making culture the big, big word, the, the common word across all, almost all of our domains, and with very specific strategies to accomplish those, and supported by best practice and our research. We have the whats, the whys, and we figure out with best practice what the hows are. We also have, on an annual basis, involve the community to create a culture of community involvement, and we've talked about it briefly on Saturday, about the annual parent committees that we've had. We've had one every year, and we will continue to have that this year, at least our recommendation is, on that, to look at start times. That is a, the, high school start times is a very popular topic across the state. The state legislature, and the governor signed a bill last summer, establishing a committee. Dr. Hoffman down at the IU is a member of that committee. But across the, the superintendents, probably every, every third month, we've talked about it, start times and seeing who's doing what to whom because it impact, well, one, one district does the other district, it'll impact the other districts. Excuse me. So, without further ado, the keeper of the goals and keeping us on track, the reporting out for the last five years has been Ms. Edwards. So I'll ask her to, to take us through the, the different goals, the strategies, and we have questions that you've asked us, and we've put them in there with, as highlights, so we can have that, help bring back the focus of what your previous comments have been. Ms. Edwards.
Good evening. As Dr. Harner explained, we tried to lay out the goals a little differently to capture a lot of the feedback that you provided in the Board Retreat, and different questions and feedback that we've heard throughout the year, so it wasn't limited to what we heard on that one day. A couple of, I guess, themes or things I would say about the goals, there is some continuity in them, meaning that there's a lot of things that we have been working on, and each year we do the next iteration of, and we haven't heard a desire like to radically change direction or to stop having data teams, or, you know, things like that. So some of the goals, especially around the academic program and, and teaching and learning, and our work on, on improving instruction, those things have some continuity in the way the goals are laid out. One difference we did pull out, so we have, the first section is culture for teaching and learning that really focuses on, on instruction. And then we did pull out, and this came out of, I think it was Mr. Akmanowicz's suggestion or, or comment about having a section that focuses on the, more of the social and emotional aspects, and I believe the language that you had used was a culture of service respect and diversity, and so we pulled the things that were related to that into a different And then, and we'll go through in a little more detail, so there can, all of your questions, discussion questions can be, can be talked about to the extent you want to do that. The academic program goals are similar. There are a couple new things in there, but they're largely similar. The culture of safety, security, and wellness, all of what is in that section derives from the Community Safety Committee's report, except for one item. And when we get to that section, you'll notice that we explicitly talk about student wellness in that section of the goals. And so one of the, the questions that we have to ask you, or to, that we had as a discussion question, is, is that consistent with the Board's philosophy of having student wellness and mental health incorporated into our safety work? It certainly is a, a critical component of that, which is what our, our parent committee discovered. And then there's an operations goal at the end. So I'm not sure how you want to approach the discussion. We, we tried in here to be informative because, you know, I didn't start out in education, and I've noticed that over the years that I am just as good at using jargon that nobody understands but educators, as many of the educators, so that has rubbed off. But we, we tried to provide more insight so that you can sort of see what we're thinking and what we mean by the different goal or strategies that we have listed, and why we think they're important, and then to capture your, your questions. So I guess I would invite you, if we start with the, the culture for teaching and learning, there's a couple sets of questions that you might have, or questions that we have heard, and, and I would invite anyone to ask those questions or engage in discussion on those topics, or, you know, ask any questions about the, the goals.
Explain tiers, the meaning of the word tier, as used here, not as in used in English.
It's used in...
One, two, two, and three, running ease.
Okay. Dr. Hoffman, do you want to, I can answer that, but I think that your answer would be more comprehensive.
I'm sure you would also do just mine. So the, the tiered model really focuses on tier one being high-quality classroom instruction, so that's for everyone. And that can be, in this case, we're talking more about academic, but it can also be behavioral. So whatever supports we're providing to the largest body of students would be tier one. That's where our focus is. When students require more specific intervention, again, either academically or behaviorally, then we would be using data to make those recommendations for them to get a next level of support, which would be tier two. And that could look different for different students. It might be more, a more supportive environment. It might be meeting with a specialist to kind of fill some gaps, or academically, socially or behaviorally, it could be meeting with a counselor, things like that. And then you think about it like a pyramid, then we have some students who would require even further supports or interventions, and so that would become tier three. Right now, we, we don't have that real pyramid-looking process working in most of our buildings because of some changes over the years, and so what we've tried to do for next year and incorporate in the goals is make a purposeful time in the day to address interventions with students, but then also make sure that the teachers have, and the buildings have those supports, because you can't just add time to the day and not have a person there to support these students, or have a data meeting that would drive knowing which students need support at which time, because the only way that this works is if it's an individualized approach. You can't have a student be in tier two forever. They would be tier two for the skill that they need addressed or for the behavior that they're having. And then we would help them back through tier one again. And then maybe it's a different, you know, think about it maybe, um, in math. If you're learning about fractions and that's a struggle for you, we would want to move you to a smaller, more supportive group to help you through fractions. When you move on to decimals, you, you may not need that same targeted group. So we would want to look at our data, move those students back and instead pull out the group of students who need help with decimals, right? That's a easy way to think about it. So, um, it takes a lot of work, particularly at the building level, right, um, to, to make a tiered system work, but it is, uh, re- research-based and shows that, um, putting a, a targeted support for students in is what makes the most difference in terms of closing the achievement gap for students.
Was that easy? Yeah. It represents a little bit of a change for us. I think we, um, in, in working with our buildings and principals and teachers and, um, there, I think really was a sense that, um, we didn't have time built in or enough structures in place for tier two and three interventions. Um, and our, many of our teachers were trying to deliver quality tier one instruction to everybody and be able to do intervention with students that needed, um, more. And like up to a certain point, that's what every teacher does every day. But past that point, we still weren't providing the time or the resources or the structures, um, for them to be able to do that effectively. So this is in, um, I think this kind of, there's a couple other of our goals that sort of all tie together with this, but it's in response to seeing that we really didn't think we were providing adequate time at the, um, at the elementary level or, um, a system that was allowing kids who needed more support to, to, uh, to get the, the attention they needed.
And I think one of the things that you had brought up, Dr. Harner, was possibly adding back in things that were taken out for this year's goals, like test scores. Is that, I have any chance to review the whole document? Is that something that's being?
That's in here. That's in here. Accountability system, reporting back to the board?
Well, I thought it was like, um, I know one of the things we had talked about at the retreat was the, um, was it college readiness? Mr. Mitchell, like we were talking about.
You're talking about the metrics? The, the metrics right here are, are not in this report, but they have in a system of metrics we have. And, uh, be, but it's not a part of what, with this presentation right here, but.
Okay.
Yes.
We'll have a, we'll have a conversation.
That, that could follow right after this.
Yeah, okay. Now, I appreciate the level of detail. This is, this is a lot to go through and, and, um, I like that you have the why and the theory and action so we can kind of understand each other better. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Can I ask a question about, um, one specific one here? Just, I'm looking at it and it seems to me like it, we have it written as a goal, but it's kind of a requirement of being an educator. Ms. Balloon, if you want to listen up on this one. Culture, service, respect and diversity, the last one, says implement requirements of special education corrective action plan on educating students in their least restrictive environment. That's flat out required, isn't it? I mean, it's not like we have a choice on that. We, we have, we do that regularly with our IEPs because that's what we have to do, right?
Dick, why don't you come on up here for a second, please?
So three years ago, we were monitored by the state, or two years ago, we were monitored by the state and one of the areas that we were out of compliance was outplacing students. So I do have the link, um, in there, uh, which kind of shows what that corrective action plan was. And part of it does include, um, the implementation of school-wide positive behavior supports, hiring board-certified behavior analysts. Um, so we currently, uh, are over by 2% of the students that we outplace of what the state expects that we should be able to outplace or what we should be able to educate in our least restrictive environment, if that makes sense.
But the, there are several components to this that's all connected and, and you've asked a lot of those questions during our retreat about discipline. And if you look at, look at our, the thicker version of this is, one of the big things is what's your, what's the board's philosophy of discipline? We have the, the federal guidelines that tell us and, and they come in and they inspect us and we have to have our students in a least restrictive environment, restricted environment. At the same time, we have, uh, concerns about, expressed by teachers to say, well, the, the high school's running amok. This was last year, not this year. And, and we have, we, to, to fix that in some part is taking students that were, that have IEPs, that have a, a, a serious emotional disability and place, outplacing them. And then that makes our number go south. But if we don't do that, we're not taking care of the discipline inside the building because of the, of the law. So part of this, this discussion night, the questions we have under the, for board questions of, you know, with rhetorical in a way of, of us for you is what's your philosophy of discipline and does it match the federal guidelines? And if it doesn't, you know, one of the things that we wanted, we wanted to do was to bring it back to you and, and part of, one of our goals is to, is to bring in our attorney, our special ed attorney to teach you about that so you can understand, uh, what, what is required for students who have emotional support challenges. And we have those issues every day. Now, it, like, I, I was walking to high school today, walking around with Bob Lee is kind of an end-of-year conversation. And from his vantage point, this year, last year's like night and day. Now, the academy has been an incredible asset to the district for both the students and for the culture of the high school. And I, I think everyone has commented on that. But, but one of the things that we want to bring out as a part of the discussion of our goals, what are the things that you expect out of us? What do we need to inform you about, about what the federal guidelines are? And that's why we put that in here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I apologize because as I look at this, it appears to me that the corrective action plan was the PDE's audit of us.
They, they audited us and we were deficient in that area. So I had to write a three-year action plan that they come back every year and, and meet with me and monitor and say, where are you? Did you do everything that you said year one? Did you do everything in year two? Um, next year will be year three.
But we're, we're implementing things that, that we were required to implement by a third party.
Yes, through, by PDE. Mm-hmm.
And to be very specific about strategies, you've approved a budget that allowed us to have, uh, two additional special education teachers and a behavioral analyst. That is, it gets right to the crux of making sure when, when they go into tier three supports, then we have identified the, the challenge that the student has and we are placing them in the, with the, the appropriate instruction and the appropriate placement is, and we're expanding out the academy one grade lower next year with, with having seventh and eighth graders, or besides eighth graders, we had a few there this year. So, so we have the opportunity to keep the students in-house and not outplacing them. So we've taken care of our corrective action and by your, your budget that you've approved, um, and the, and the teachers you've already approved that we've hired, that, that meets check mark for having the human resource to address the, the goal.
One comment that I have, um, that I think that we need to sharpen is, these goals, we don't really have a clear understanding of what defines success. And I mean, from it, from both, um, a data perspective and also maybe an anecdotal perspective because in previous years, it seems like what we've done is, you know, was it completed or wasn't it? And I not, I am, I don't believe that just saying you completed something really reflects possibly the quality of the completion of the work. And so, um, you know, just as an example, the first one here, goal developing consistently reinforced positive culture for learning at the classroom, building, district and community level. So I really appreciate all the detail. This is so helpful. I can't wait to really dive into all of this. But I just wonder, you know, how are we going to know, how are we going to measure that we were successful in those areas? Some of them, there's pretty clear way to do so, but I believe, you know, so for instance, I'm just going to give an example, utilizing regular feedback systems to assess employee satisfaction. Well, you know, what is, what would it look like for us to be successful in that endeavor? Does that make sense to everybody so far? I don't know if you thought on that.
That's an easy one. I, I guess, the question would be, I, I, um, maybe keying off that. You've probably heard of the term smart goals. I forget what that means, but you know, specific, measurable, attainable, something or other.
Specific.
Relevant. Yeah, specific, measurable, attainable, relevant.
Measurement, attainable.
Timely. There you go.
All the principals time in.
So I guess, do you have a sense of how, how you want to be measured on these or how you can measure on these? Or is that something that's going to be forthcoming or, um, what, what were you thinking about that?
Well, the, the previous metrics that we've used and we still update, will update when we get all the, end of year, some of the scores, assessment scores in our metrics. And I believe we have like five metrics per, per building level and, uh, for elementary, middle and I think about 10 or 12 at the high school. And then we have some, um, 13. And then we have, uh, district-level goals that are based on best practices, expectations, uh, for example, for truancy, making sure that attendance is at a certain level, um, over a several-year period and it, that it improves. And we have that kind of flatlined is, or not flatlined, but, um, having, this is where we are, this is where we want to be and over the, the, the couple of years, this is what our objective is. And if you recall, um, last year, the year before, that was part of, um, the overarching plan, but it's based on best practices. Big one is 85% of our students are college and career-ready. Now, how are you doing that? Well, how are you doing it? The students are, that are going to the technical school that they've passed the NOCTI, uh, the National Occupational Skill Test in their particular area. Or, and the other side is that has a student, um, taken at least one, uh, AP course and has been successful navigating through that course. We're up to 42% of the high school last year. I don't know what the, the exams are last month, so I don't know what the, the total number is, but it was 42% last year, um, taking the college, uh, course, 34% passed in the AP course. And then we had, um, like an 86% pass rate on the NOCTI exam of our students.
So, so is there a way to tie those back to these categories?
They're not always the same though. I think that they're different measurements sometimes, right?
Well, the.
But I think that's, that's the crux of the issue, right? It's.
The goals are for, for what the adults do. The metrics are, are the outcomes of those and our success as a.
Right, so. I guess what I'm trying to do is set us up for success and not ambiguity and make sure Kalen's issues are addressed and make sure we understand that, you know, if, if, if our goal is to get to, you know, Columbus, Ohio, and we've got all these tactics and strategies to get there, how do we measure it? Well, I don't know. Look at your GPS. Are you in Columbus yet or not? Uh, you know, halfway through the school year, am I halfway to Columbus? So I guess what I'm looking for is how can we make sure that, um, halfway through the school year or at the end of the next school year, we've got something here and you have metrics that are neither overwhelming nor underwhelming and have some sort of clear, um, tie, tie-in to, oh, right, these metrics that we're measuring, oh, they, they go under the domain for culture and teaching. Like the discipline goals, is that what? Do you make sure you discipline at least 20 kids a month? No, I'm just kidding. It's a joke. But you know what I'm saying? Like, how do you, operations and finance, you know? That's probably pretty cut and dry. You might have goals to say, we didn't overrun budgets or we didn't. So I guess, you know, just to preclude, um, any sort of Monday morning quarterbacking, is there something that we can do to tighten up or make things measurable?
One of the things Dr. Harner did say a second ago is that the, or somebody, the goals are for the adults and the metrics are the kids, right? Okay. So these goals in front of us, if you look at them, it's a list, you know, to Kalen, to your question, these are all a list of, of actions that the administration is going to take. I'm looking at number one here now, all A through F. Every one of these goals is an action that the administration and the, the, the staff is going to do. And you're, you know, how do we measure it? The, the, the simple answer would be, well, we'd see if the percentage of students meeting X, Y and Z is going up or down or something like that. Uh, my big concern with that is we've had this discussion before, there's a lot more than the administration that goes into student success, a lot of other factors. These goals, as I see them, are measurable in whether or not they took the actions to implement these procedures regardless of outcome almost. I don't, I don't, maybe I'm, I don't want to say I'm reading that wrong. Am I reading that wrong? Regardless of outcome, you can show that you've implemented these goals and say you've met the goal.
Well, not all of these.
I think, but I think to, to Kalen's point though, I think that, that there's a difference between implementing something to check a box and implementing something to be successful. And I think that's really what we're trying to decide, right? That's my, my impression because, um, you know, you could, you could get to Ohio on a horse and buggy. You could fly in a jet, you can drive in a car. There's all kinds of ways of getting there. I mean, how you define success would be what you're trying to do in between getting to Ohio. And so I think that trying to figure that out is really with some, with some clear, non-simple check marks. Like, how do we know? So where are we at? You know, for me, it would be, um, you know, we have, uh, employee satisfaction scores of 70%. So then the metric is, well, we want to increase that to 75 or, or 77 or pick one of those things out of an employee set that you want to work on, right? I don't know whether it's leadership visibility in the building, accessibility, I don't know. And then the next time you test for that, that number would theoretically go up and that would be.
Well, let, let's use Ms. Mitchell's earlier example of, uh, letter F under culture of teaching and learning, which is utilizing regular feedback systems to, to assess employee satisfaction. Now, if you read the explanation of that, it says, "Principals will continue to use employee feedback systems to regularly assess building culture and climate for learning from the adult perspective, will reflect on the feedback received and will plan accordingly as appropriate." I guess to me, how do you measure that? What, what is, you know, are, are we asking the principals to do, you know, four surveys in the school year? So, I, I mean, again, that's something difficult to measure.
So I, I mean, I think you have to, I think, I don't think you can survey something that quickly and I don't think you can implement something that quickly that was going, that it's going to change course.
But what I'm saying is, is that on that specific point.
Right, I think.
If, if we're going to measure either success, you know, did you meet that particular thing? Then what, what would be a success? You know? How do we know that we can say, yes, that was completed? Or what percentage of that was completed? Because from what I've just read, I can't put that together.
Well, that's because we don't have a metric for whatever that's trying to improve, I guess. So again, it's not, it's more about, I know you put a lot of thought, the, the whole purpose behind this is, we think in order to achieve this goal, we should do X, Y and Z, which is awesome. But I'm just saying, how would you want to measure yourself? And shall we put something down? And yeah, this is, of course, regular feedback systems. That implies a system, that implies frequency, that implies I can measure, did you do it or not? It may not imply that we're very good at taking feedback, but I don't know how to measure that anyway unless we have something from the first feedback to improve on. So it's a little hard.
It's a problem though.
Yeah, and that's why I, I think also I said, you know, these could be larger goals at this point and maybe there's a certain opportunity later on to refine the, some of these specifics. I'm just trying to look to make sure you're not boxed in a corner, to make sure, um, there's something tangible. Or not, or that we understand. I'm just looking for connecting the dots. Like, you know, those metrics aren't here, so I can't actually connect the dots and I'm sure you've thought about them. And maybe at some point we can see the metrics.
The metrics originally were developed out of some research, um, from, I think it was Montgomery County, Maryland, about, um, you know, planning with the end in mind, what are the indicators at the elementary level, the middle level and the high school level that re- that result in college and career readiness? So that was where the original metrics derived. So it's things like school readiness, meaning how many students are reading on grade level at the end of kindergarten, is actually an indicator that is associated with successful graduation from high school and transition to college and career. So by analyzing, I don't know if any of you are familiar with like early warning systems that crunch a lot of data and come up with an algorithm that can accurately predict into the past outcomes based on a whole set of factors so that you can work with them in advance. That wasn't the most coherent explanation, but hopefully you got the idea. But that's sort of what this is. So if, if none of our students are school ready and reading on grade level by the end of kindergarten, then the chance that they're going to graduate from high school and go on to college goes way down. So the.
Understood.
The metrics that we have used in the past are grounded in the research about what are the indicators that predict college and career success? And that's why we chose them.
Right, so there's a whole parcel of metrics.
Right, and they're all student focused.
On one of these two pages.
Right, they're all, we believe that we do these things, that we will see the results in our student.
Right, so, so which, which one of, you know, that, how many metrics? I remember the spreadsheets. I remember, I remember even giving you relief from some of those.
There's five elementary, specific elementary, seven specific middle level, and then there's 13 specific high school.
And of this two pager, do all of those metrics just go to one bullet on here?
No.
No.
So my, my point is, can you somehow show me five of those metrics are for this? Seven of those metrics for that? And here's the bullets that really don't have metrics. The metric for utilizing regular feedback is, you're going to see us do it. Right, I mean, you know, and that's okay. But my, my point is, it. How do you want to be measured?
I mean, a goal to me is, is pointless without a measurement of success.
Well, they have, well.
But there's not, there's not, I don't think there's clarity from a board perspective, even if there were to be measurements outside of a different way of collecting that information. It doesn't necessarily correspond to the, the goals that we set here. And I think that what we need to look at as far as strategically as a board is, you know, what is it? I think these are all really great. I mean, it, it's a ton of stuff that's on here. But maybe we could simplify it and have concrete measurable goals that we really want to focus on and provide a rationale for that, have a baseline of that data. And this may take us, this may be the first year that we taking consideration some of these things. So for instance, we don't have a clear baseline of employee satisfaction, I guess. So perhaps this year would be that we would establish a baseline for that in an effort to improve it in the future. So to me, if you don't have, if you don't have a way to measure a goal, I'm not, I just, I'm not sure it's worth even being on here.
Well, just a tad of pushback, a little bit.
No, please do, please do.
Completing the transition into a PBIS and a three-tiered system. Our purpose here, as your purpose is a board and my purpose is superintendent, and our team's purpose and the leaders out there is to advance student achievement. And that's why we put the mission statement up front, is to advance student achievement. So what advances student achievement? We believe by implementing the PBIS and the response to intervention and instruction model in the district and getting that implemented will advance student achievement. In turn, our metrics, our student outcomes will rise.
So I get what you're saying. And I think that you, you provide, sorry to interrupt. What I'm saying is, and we always talk about not getting in the weeds as a board, but I would like to see something more simplified such as, Mitch, you ready for this? We want to improve scores and such and such. And then the rationale that you decides, you can certainly communicate it to us on the approach that you plan to take. But at the end of the day, I'm going to look at this measurement to see if it was accomplished or not. And, and so we could simplify it, that, you know, some of these goals. And some of these in here, you're right, you can't, I'm not sure that you would be able to necessarily.
Very objective, not subjective.
Yeah, some of them you wouldn't necessarily be able to, to measure. But I think that this is very loose, in my opinion. And, and I love, I love seeing all this detail. It helps me understand what your approach is to getting there. But I think that our high arching goals, and I'm, I've been really trying to research this a lot to try to understand, because I don't know all the answers. I'll be the first one to tell you that. I, I think that, you know, we still need to tighten up on how we're going to measure success. And you can provide the rationale of how you're going to get there. But there needs to be some type of accountability at, at the end of the day.
I think, yeah, so, I mean, I think one of the things, you know, we know that we, you know, there were certain things that we talked about as a board, struggling with, with middle school math scores were, were one of the things. So you implemented some changes then, and we would expect that number to go up, right? So theoretically. So, so, you know, those would be, you know, we will improve math scores by whatever. And I, I think that the attainable number is, is not, not the far-fetched one. So I don't know, where are we at with college and career readiness? We always quote 85%. Where are we at?
I don't have issue with metrics, it's a sound.
All right, well, what were we last year?
What was it last year?
What was it last year?
30% or so.
What was it? About 30%. So I, I guess the question is, if you set a goal, you know, can we increase that by 3%? And, and then, you know, implement systems and things to increase that.
Or even look at trends, right, for a five-year period and say, you know, and you probably understand what that's like in sales, because I've been there too, is you, what is your five-year average? And you're going to increase it 3% on the five-year average. Not, so that makes it even more attainable. I'm just throwing it out there, but, so that you look at historicals as well.
And other districts as a reference, of course, not just some goals we want arbitrarily. Like 75% by two years from now, that wouldn't be doable. Then a miracle happens. Or we could set it 75%.
I, I, I think that the smart phrase is that they're, they're obtainable, right? That we're not setting some far-fetched. And, and one of them, I mean, we have some stuff in language in here with regards to things that we have to do, IEP-wise and stuff. You know, maybe the goal is that we will, you know, ensure that we're, you know, in compliance with.
But that's something they have to do anyway, right?
By, it is, but, but you need to put programs in place to do that. And so while you may not have an exact number, that may be one of the checkmark ones. You know what? We don't have any action plans. We weren't put on probation or whatever the case may be for a negative outcome. It's a positive outcome. And the administration put those action plans in place and committed to it and fixed it, so.
Um, is it?
Yeah, I mean, from my perspective, I think the goal setting is probably the most important thing that we'll do as a board, because the administration needs to understand what's important to us. And we need to understand the, the why behind it. And a lot of it is going to be binary. Yes, do we do a safety committee or no? And, and those kinds of things, we have to defer to them. But, I mean, it could be indicators like Ms. Edwards was saying. There are some things at the elementary level, whether it be reading proficiency or even absenteeism. Those are some indicators of future success that, that show itself early. And maybe those kinds of things are things that we could talk about, maybe put in a number to it and saying, hey, we'd like to decrease student absenteeism by building, by grade, by 2%. Or something that we can understand, because our perspective is so much different than your perspective. It's just the nature of, of the world you guys live in, that we just have to understand better as a board so we can kind of come together and, and have easier discussions throughout the year because we understand which, what's important to both of us.
That's exactly what, go ahead, sorry.
Well, I was going to ask, what's the percentage of the graduation rate in our high school? So it's pretty good, good. Why is the college readiness percentage so low?
What is that last year?
Multiple metrics there.
Okay.
That's the lowest one. As we, we, the 30% number, which Mitch referring to?
Okay, for.
37%.
Well, it was, it was 19 when you came, it went up to 36, it went back down to about 30, and that was ACT, College Prayers, based on ACT and SAT results. That's what it was.
Yeah, but you got.
And scores.
But you got to be consider, you're only, you're only considering college ready, college and career. That's why the NOCTI comes in. I don't know what percentage of our students.
Yeah, less than 50% of students take that exam. Around 50% of students, some take the SAT, some take the ACT, some take both.
Excuse me, I'm not on speaker.
Right, but that was both of them.
And we can't, and we can't control that number.
I understand that.
So, so our, our overarching 85% college and career ready has those passing a NOCTI, which is 25% or 22% of our students go to the tech school per grade from ninth grade on. And, and 97% roughly over, over time pass that NOCTI. So right there, you're into the 20% category. And then 42% takes an AP exam or is taking an AP course. And then 30-some, 34% is passing that course. So you got those 34, you get 20%, so we're like at 60-some percent. And that's, that's a high bar. That's a high bar considering where we were at 19% taking an AP course five years ago. And we had only 17% of our students going to tech school. So we, our goal, our, first, my personal goal is we're over 25% easy. We had empty seats at the tech school, and that's an awesome facility. And we have not maximized the potential of that school for our students.
So just a thought, I feel like maybe we're, we're jumping the gun. Shouldn't we be evaluating what are the biggest challenges of our school district first? And then define the barriers of success first? And as a board, understand what those challenges are? And then subsequently develop a plan and goals that align with how to move us forward?
I think what you see in the goals reflects that, the administration's assessment of that. Evaluating where we are, what are the things that we believe will move us forward? And how does that translate into a goal?
I believe that we were in such a position before with the previous board that goals like this made a lot of sense, because lots of things needed to be done or a base needed to be set, so to speak. Now, I think we need to kind of build off this with these standards in certain areas, like Kalen pointed out, different ways to do that.
I think the, these goals are all worthy goals. And you guys are the experts as far as developing them. And I take that at face value. And I, Ms. Edwards, what you just said, I, I believe that. I, I guess where I'm struggling with it is just how do we measure it? Really, that, that's, I would like to see more detail on, okay, how are we going to measure all of these? What is going to be successful? You know, is it going to be a percentage? Again, is it, is it, you know, okay, we're 80% complete here and here's why, okay? And that's what I don't see in here.
But you're saying it quite often. You, you all know the metrics that you take. You just rattle off a bunch for college and career readiness. Just, can we see them? I know they're around. I've seen them. I've seen them in documents. They're just not attached to this document. So I know, I know we have them.
Would you go back to my webpage?
Yeah, but a lot of, to John's point, and, I mean, you said it before, Nancy Ann outlined, what, 17? Whatever the number was. If we apply that, those academic goals or metrics to various ones of these, you're still going to be left with a large number of these goals that are outside the academic realm that still remain difficult to measure.
Well, and, and I'm okay with it. I'm just saying that, it's, it's sort of like, I want to become more fit. I want to lose weight. Well, the only real goal is stepping on a scale and measuring my, you know, VO2 max or something.
I'm going to the gym.
Well, that wouldn't matter if I did it a different way, like climbing.
That's the rationale to get there.
Like, I could be climbing mountains and don't have to go to the gym. But the, the point is, there's, you know, that's the end goal. The end goal here is getting kids out the door that know enough, tested enough, whatever we, we say says college and career ready. So we have the metric, even measuring, I've been seeing them all other four years that I've been here, or however long it's been, seems like 10. It's probably three. So I'm just saying, let's put these in some form that's digestible and high level.
So if you look here, you see these measurements that are put up on this large screen. Now, these are great. However, as I mentioned before, those are not necessarily reflective of this. So again, I just, and I, as a board, I don't feel like we've even really had a good conversation collectively of what are our biggest priorities as members of the board? So first of all, defining what our biggest challenges are. What are the biggest priorities that we have as a board that we want to achieve? And then from there, develop simple goals, you know, four, five, that we can actually measure. And I love the example Rob gave. If it's something to do with safety, it could be, well, we know the problem and the challenges that we're facing are this, this, and this. And so the specific goal we want to achieve is this. And then you all figure out that strategy of how to get there. It's just, I, I'm struggling, I think, like a lot of other folks, that I, I don't know that this is, it's meas, I don't know if it's measurable. And, and while it may reflect the biggest challenges that we're facing, some of this stuff, as mentioned, is just a commitment of previous goals and things like that. And, and may even be a little bit, some of these goals may be, we could make, make them at a better, like at a higher level, I guess, and, and make them measurable to where some of these other things are going to fall in place as a result of achieving specific goal. But I don't know really where we go from here. That being said, it sounds like we have a lot of commonalities in what we, what, what we're seeing here. But, but how do we move forward?
Open for ideas. The, the thing that we have here in this document, get those to be green, in our view.
Right.
And so these are the things that are heavy lifts.
I get that.
To include the federal mandate, they're heavy lifts for us to get right to improve and change a lot of things in our culture and our instructional practice, which requires an awful lot of work.
Right, and I just want to draw the line, like domain, academic program, goal, increased rigor in college and career readiness. How do we measure it? There. Okay, that's all I'm asking. These are disconnected documents. They shouldn't be. That's my point.
I'd recommend actually, and, and I'm open to suggestions as well, is to have, gosh, the word I was going to use not probably good. What's another word to, we need to have an assessment of, like a SWOT analysis or something to be able, that's a lot nicer than what I was thinking, I'll tell you later. Yeah, so I, I think we need to, as a district, and maybe have a report provided to us, board members of, yes, and those who don't know what that is. SWOT is strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. So if we can really understand first where our strengths lie as, from your perspective, and then where we need to improve, from there, not only can we move forward, but we also have a very strong understanding of where we are as a district and can be more informed as board members in trying to create some of these goals. I don't, I know that we, it's a little time sensitive, but I still feel like we shouldn't rush through this. We need to take the time to do this the right way. So like I said, I'd recommend maybe a SWOT. And I think some kind of way, having a meeting to understand what everyone's, you know, high-level goals are, and then a session to try and brainstorm some of these goals. But I'm open to what you guys feel. I don't, I mean, I don't, like I said, I don't have all the answers.
I mean, my opinion on the goals is, the administration is telling us these are the areas that they need to focus on, that are the most critical. And then as a board, we just need to understand the why of it. And then to get to a point where some things are going to be binary, did it, didn't do it. But maybe there's other things that we can attach something to, say, an incremental improvement year over year or something like that. I haven't a chance to read through everything to give more concrete suggestions. But, I mean, there's things in here that weren't there before that I like. Like on page two, letter E, they have a, a strategy session, they're carving out time. page two, letter E, they have a, a strategy session. They're carving out time for teachers. Keith, they're adding a dashboard for you with those types of things. There's just a lot of great communication that, as a board member, I didn't always understand what was going on, or, or why, but I think this kind of gives us a good stepping stone that, I don't think we have to start from scratch. Like, they're even adding in a, a student assistance program for a counselor at the elementary and middle school levels. Those are things that weren't there before, and it just shows that, you know, they're, they're open to suggestions, and, and maybe we just need to understand what we feel comfortable with working with this outline here.
Yeah, the, the goals, I, I agree with you, Mr. Deliberto. The goals, I think, here are excellent ones. My only question was, you know, how, how do we measure them? And, and I see that graphic up there, but to John's point, you know, this is great, what you've given us, but how are they going to be measured? That, that is still my thought. As far as the goals themselves, I think they're outstanding. And to your point, Mr. Deliberto, obviously, the administration heard a lot of our concerns, because you see a lot of this in here. So, kudos to, to you guys for putting this together. I'm okay with it. I'm okay with what you've put. I just would like to see more information on how will it be measured. That's all.
So, so question.
Been the end result that we're shooting for.
Well, that's, that's what I'm talking about.
Is it typical for, no offense, is it typical for administrators to come up with their own goals? Because, no disrespect, but I feel like, what I'm not, I feel like should be part of the equation, that's not, is a brainstorming among board members to collectively come up with these, rather than them being given to us, and then...
These are supposed to be mutually agreed upon between the superintendent and the board?
No, I understand that, but they were created and given to us.
Yes, ma'am. You're right.
But we, but we set the mission.
We took your feedback from, through our evaluations, and incorporated that feedback into these goals and reflective. And when it comes to SWOT and all that, this is what we think we need as our next step. Each, we've been building on it each year over the last five years, and we've got a long way to go. And each, each year, there've been very specific lifts that your principals have had to have out there in the district, and back in finance...
Do they get to set their own goals, principals?
They, they participate in this process.
I'm just saying, most employment, you don't really get to set your own goals. You certainly, I, I'm a strong believer in getting buy-in from the work that's being done in order for it to be successful. You have to have that buy-in. I just feel like the time that we spent in the previous retreat, we spent very little amount of time on brainstorming these goals, and now we're sitting here, almost, it seems like, moving forward with some refinements, going to adopt them, without having maybe spent enough time collectively brainstorming and coming up with them in collaboration with the administration.
Well, none of us are educator experts. That's my only critique of that.
Which is why it should be a collaboration. It shouldn't, I, I wouldn't say...
We can bring our backgrounds, we can bring our work experience, we can bring, you know, everything to the table, like you're trying to do. You know, we're all trying to do that. But I'm not going to tell them how to do tier one and tier, right, I mean...
I'm not going to tell them how to do it either. I'm just saying, so if you, I don't have to know what, you know, I don't have to tell you, and I think that's what gives you autonomy to be able to do, achieve a goal, is if I say, hey, these scores are this, and this percentage, or this college and career-ready is this percentage, and we really want to see that increase by X amount, based off historical data, and you, you're going to figure out a plan to do that.
Well, the primary goal that they've been working off of was from years ago, which is the...
Stop! What'd you say? One more time. One more time for me.
The primary goal is from years ago, has been trying to raise from nineteen...
What did we say last meeting? If we said that one more time?
Oh, okay, well, okay, so, what needs to be, that's, no, that's fine. That's why what needs to be in here is the goddamn eighty-five percent this and that, right? The freaking numbers need to be in here. So, we have, we don't have these arguments. You have built this to achieve our mission and to achieve those damn goals, and why aren't they here? They're in the freaking spreadsheet. Put them in this damn document, and we can stop talking about it, because we'll see it. Our overarching goal is to get a block of kids at some attainable level over the goal line.
So, let me give you an example though.
That's the goal. And we asked the administration, who are experts, how the heck do you do that in this environment? And you put down a bunch of things, say, this is how we think we can do it. Cool. Now, can we add a little few more things? It might be binary checkboxes, on or off. Some might be measurable, one to ten. I don't care. I just need a little more specificity, and I'll be happy.
Let me give you an example, though. What if it was a goal for this board, and it would never have the opportunity to be discussed, because there's no, it doesn't feel like a lot of collaboration? What if we said we wanted to bring team time back? What if we said we wanted to look into X, Y, Z, whatever it is, you know? But my point is, and you have a collaboration between board members, and if we all agree, hey, we want to have team time back, and then administration can tell us the, why they think we can or couldn't, you know, do that, and then we have a discussion and a dialogue to where we make it a goal or not, right?
It's not a goal.
Or full-time kindergarten, or, I'm just giving you an example, though.
I, I understand, and I'm, I'm cool with that, but the point is, there's no numbers here yet.
Oh, because I think we need to, I, I think we, we're all talking about sort of similar things, and I think, I, I agree, John, with you, that we're not educators, and so it's really tough for us to kind of give direction. While I agree with Kalen saying, look, you know, we know, you know, there are some, some things that are important to us to accomplish as, as a board, you know, and things that we've struggled with as a community, that I think that, that we're working on, but we don't know that we're doing well on it. Diversity is one of them, right? So, we heard tonight, you know, in diversity conversations, we've heard things out in the community, maybe it's not as well as, going as well as we thought it was. So, but, but yet, we, we achieved a hundred percent in that goal last year. And, you know, so the check mark was done. So, then, then the question is, what's next, right? So, so I think we, we all agree. I, I do believe that with, I think it's moving the needle of these academics, and these, these are the tactics, and I do believe they should be built in here. And I don't think they should be built in as like, we are going to accomplish it by, and the only way to hit this mark is by getting, I don't know, let's say, we, let's say we set college and career readiness at eighty-five, right? Well, that may be the max. But what if we shot for, you know, today, we're at thirty, okay? So, achieving eighty-five is probably not realistic. But if we set a target of, you know, we want to at least beat this year, maybe by a percent, and maybe next year, you know, and, and, and here's, here's, you know, if we take it to this, you know, a threshold may be thirty-one percent, target may be, you know, we want to go to thirty-five percent, and then we'll, we'll throw a Hail Mary and say, look, if we get to forty percent, we've done a real nice job, right? I, I'm just saying, but the problem is, they're not measured regularly enough that you can tell how well you're doing, right? They're not, they're not reported monthly to you, so you have no real indicator how well you're doing. And that's what I'm understanding. Is that correct?
A lot of the measures right now are summative and occur once a year. However, we do have a number of assessments in place that we do more frequently, that we might be able to look at that differently, that we didn't have in place when we created the metrics.
Yeah, so I guess...
For example, we do NWEA now, and we do it three times a year, whereas the measures in the metrics reflect the PSSA score once.
Right. So, you, you don't want to put all your eggs in one basket. You want to be able to say, okay, and change course, right? So, like you did this year, where you identified that there was a problem with math, and we, you implemented a couple of different changes...
Did some things to try to help it, yeah.
To try to help it, and yet, you know, you don't, you still don't know, I guess, how well you did in that, right? I mean, I don't know. Do you? I have no idea.
Dr. Horner, I have a question for you. At what point this year, what is your end date that you would need for this board to approve your goals heading into next year so that you can begin working on them? Is, is that the end of this month, the end of next month, the beginning of August? Can, can you give us some guidance there?
Well, our current timeline with administrative team and vacations and all, the week after graduation, in two weeks is when we have summer leadership, where we come together as a team, and we start breaking this apart, and elementary principals work together, working on, and then they work individually on their action plans. Middle school, high school team works together. We work on our own, and, and they come back in August, after they're, they get some vacation time and doing other things. We're running summer school. We have a lot of stuff going on. Then we come back in August, and they, everybody comes back, and they, we, we sit in the executive boardroom, and a principal will sit in the back, in the, in the, like where our guest was tonight, and we all sit around the table, and they brief us on how they're going to implement the goals that you approved, and that's in August.
What, what is the absolute drop-dead date that you need to know from us what the goals are to be?
With the current, with the current timeline, if, and, is next Thursday, when you, when you're appro, when we have a board meeting for approval.
I, I understand that, but from the discussions that I'm hearing tonight, I don't know that that's going to happen. So, that's why I'm asking you, what is your drop-dead date?
Well, you have, you can have rescheduled meeting, and if you get us, and, and, and plan on holding us accountable to outcomes, and we do not have the summer months to work on it, I don't think that would be fair to the team.
I agree.
I, I might propose, you know, the, your, this is a framework that you presented. If we add at least some of the larger metrics that we're shooting for, and some, you know, just a little bit more within a week's timeframe. Like, I think I mentioned earlier, if we have, if at least the framework is right, you can work within that framework, and then, if we need to adjust it, you know, two weeks later, three weeks later, or something, you might, you know, something we can negotiate. But, but I think we should at least give you the courtesy of, yeah, we, because I don't think anybody disagrees with this framework, or maybe not, but I, I certainly don't disagree with the framework. I would just like a little more meat on it. That's all.
I would like to pick out a couple of key drivers that are driving our scores in a negative direction, and, and work that into this framework for moving the district forward in the areas of, of education and learning. Safety, operations, finance, that, I don't, I don't know that there's much more you can put in there. I like what's in there now. But I would, I would say that there are, there are indicators, and I don't know them all off the top of my head, but it would be like, you know, this is where we're at. This is where we need to go. This is how we're going there, and we'll see at the end of the year how well you did. I mean, and we stay out of the way, right? I mean, we, how do we influence that? I don't know what I'm doing. All right? It's the educators' jobs. It's the leadership team. They, they implement it. Does that make sense?
That's pretty straightforward.
I just think that we need to, we, we need to spend more time throughout the year collaborating on this, because as it stands, we haven't been able to spend, aside from this time right now, we have not spent any time on collaborating on district goals and strategy. And so, strategy and goal setting is definitely one of the most important things that we do. It deserves to have more time, obviously, in this situation. I can understand from your perspective, you have to know what your goals are early on. So, would it be possible that we could make next Thursday a exec session of some sort, and then...
When would you suggest...
Have following week vote on it, or something like that?
Are you suggesting we have a third board meeting to approve the goals?
I'm suggesting that we spend time collaborating on the goals at a minimum.
No, I, I understand. So, again, you're, you're suggesting that next week, we make this, make that an executive session to kibbitz about the goals themselves, and then schedule another meeting the following Thursday to publicly approve them?
If necessary, and I think if we had to do that, and if that was the only item of discussion, it would be a relatively short meeting.
I, I was just advised that the June thirteenth meeting, just for your information, has already been advertised. We do not have enough time to re-advertise it as something different than what it already is, which is a working session. So, just keep that in mind. Now, what I was going to suggest, and tell me, anybody, if, if this sounds reasonable, but based on the feedback, what you've heard from us tonight, okay, I think there's at least a few of us that agree that these are reasonable goals. To Mr. Mercucci's point, maybe there's a, a couple other specific ones to be added into that. However, I think what, what some of us are asking for is just more of an explanation, how will these be addressed as far as, you know, percentage of completion? How do you come up with that information? So, what I was going to suggest is to take this as your framework, come back with more specifics as to how they're going to be graded out, and we can have a discussion and potentially a vote on it next week. Because I understand you are up against a timeframe that you and your team and the principals all need to know this so that they can begin to prepare. To Ms. Mitchell's point, if we do that, knowing that it's not perfect to what everybody is asking for, throughout the next year, we schedule times specific, to Ms. Mitchell's point, of talking about strategies and goals for the following year. That's kind of a compromise. It gets you what you need in the short term. It gets Ms. Mitchell and other board members that are concerned about this on the right track throughout the next year for the following year.
That would just mean we wouldn't be collaborating on this. That's just what I'm saying.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, we have the next year to collaborate.
No, I don't want to spend another year. I, if I have to wait two more weeks, I'd rather do that than wait a whole year.
Our last meeting is the next one.
We, we have a meeting. It doesn't mean we can't convene the meeting and go into executive session. And I mean, I hate to do that, and I would want to make the public aware of that situation, because it was advertised. I get that. That doesn't mean that we can't go into executive session. And I think this is one of the most important things we do, and it deserves brainstorming, collaboration, refinement, and that has not taken place this year.
But can we, so, can we do this? Can we take this document? We'll go back, we'll read through this.
And it's so much good information. Thank you, guys, for that.
There is issues you don't think are addressed in this document, then you email the administrat, email the board and administration, and ask them.
We got to be careful about, we got to be careful about...
I'm not saying we dialogue it. I'm just saying, this is just, just your observation. You put it out in the email.
You're going to miss out that collaboration, though. You're going to miss out on that bouncing off of...
Then we have, we have a dialogue next week about it. So, my, my point is...
Oh, you're saying prepare.
In any interim, they also add the meat that we want into this document that really spells out, these are the tactics for accomplishing what, and here's how we're going to measure it. You know, it's going to be scores, or whatever you're going to give us. Fair enough? I think it's, I think, because we have it, we know we have it. I think it's putting it in there, and then if we're satisfied, then we go to, to, we go through with it. If we're not satisfied, we have options at, at our hands, guys. We don't, we could, we could schedule a meeting in July, halfway through the summer. I mean, we, we have think, I don't want to do it, but I'm just saying.
Need to get it done.
We have options to not stress about it. The other thing is, we got to be careful that we're not, you know, putting too much, I mean, I think that really the crux here is that we're trying to move our, our students forward. Let's remember that's, you know, not like, and how do we get to that endpoint? We may not all agree on it. That's okay. But we need to have some goals ready to go, and I think we could do this, we can accomplish that.
Right. I, I don't want to set like arbitrary standards. That doesn't do anybody any good. But right now, everything, every, you know, the whole test is yes, no, or true, false, right? And so, I think some degree of ABC, you know, and fill in the blank, you know, is warranted after, you know, at this point. So, but yeah, I think they're going to come back to us with that.
I think it's spread. I don't think it has to be, you know, we have to hit this mark, or else you fail. It could be, you know, we set a goal of, you know, lower the goal, set that, what, what can we attain, and if we beat that, and if we beat that, great. You know, but I don't think it has to be, you know, I don't think it's black and white.
Here's an idea. We could, we could have them do what you said, Keith, in the interim, provide us with the measurements, like everybody's been saying. We could convene next Thursday and go into executive session, hammer it out, come back, reconvene the meeting, and vote on it.
And you're in executive session, because obviously, it affects the contract of the superintendent. So, you're having interaction with respect to his contract, because his goals are directly related to his contract.
Right. And I think there's some conversations, absolutely, that, that we definitely, you know, we need to have privately in regards to that. I mean, and I don't, I mean, we could brainstorm publicly if, if people want to see it. I'm not opposed to that either, but... But obviously, we can't all, like sitting like this, have the type of brainstorming that I think that we should have rightfully, the amount of time we should spend. And then we could still get it all knocked out next week.
Is there anything on the agenda next week other than the approval of the superintendent's or the goals for the district? There probably will be procedural, you know, things because they happen.
Maybe personnel hire too?
Yeah, I mean, standard things, contracts, who knows? But other than that, there's nothing.
Zach will throw something in there.
We can skip the student report and all that, too.
Dr. Horner, what are your thoughts on that?
Here to serve, sir. I think it's an excellent conversation tonight. I just liked, as you gave a history lesson on what happened 75 years ago, the, I remember the goals that I walked in this process that was before state required the superintendents to have goals and tied to performance incentives and all that, that the goal was to improve SAT scores. That was a goal. There were five goals that year, four goals that year, improve SAT scores. That could be one point. You know, over the last five years, we've improved SAT scores 108 points and all that. If you, historically speaking, or actually speaking currently, what do other superintendents have as goals? And we've shared that with you, and I think it's, it was an eye-opening experience of what their goals are compared to what we've had over the last five years. So as we have this conversation, I ask you to remember those things you've seen and all that, and tell us what you really want. I mean, that's the big thing. And if, and one of the examples, one of the examples is, well, we want to have team time back. Well, that's a, that drives a budget. So that, maybe the goals discussion is an October, November, December thing. And then when we roll out our first budget in January, then we know what our goals are the next year because that's a budgetary requirement.
Let me ask you other board members really quickly here. Some of you have information that you want to give to the administration to incorporate into the goals. In fairness to the administration, if we're to have the meeting next Thursday, go into executive session, work on it to the point where we can vote on something next Thursday, there needs to be a drop dead date for the administration to get that information from us, okay? So can we agree on a date that any information coming from us, we get to Dr. Horner and the administration by, I don't know, is it, would next Monday give you enough time to work with that, sir?
Just send it on in.
What I'm saying is that I don't want somebody sending you something Thursday morning and you having to react to that.
I think Monday's a fair day because it gives everybody the full weekend, including Friday, if they really have a.
Can everybody on the board work with that?
Well, you might not have anything to send them though.
But it may not limit the discussion for exec session, you could still collaborate during that time.
You could, but this is giving the administration
But it gives them more time.
the information of, they're going to get a looksee at what you're thinking and that they could begin to prepare.
I would like opportunities, here's where I think, where I'm focused. Where are we performing low and how do we move that?
That's what I said earlier.
That's it.
Identify where our problem areas, what are the biggest factors that are hindering our success? Identify those first, understand what we want to achieve as a board, right?
So that's in the meetings for, in the minutes for tonight. So you don't have to send an email. But to those who want to think about it and get information together and send it in, would Monday be a fair date?
It's fine by me, yes.
Okay. Dr. Horner, we've agreed that everybody that's going to send you information will do so by Monday. Okay, and then my expectation, and I think the board's expectation is, is that you take that information, gather it up, revise what you've given us tonight, with all of our expectations, including how it's going to be measured. We go into an executive session, once we get the meeting started next Thursday, we work out the details with the goal, and all board members, let's be clear on this, with the goal of approving and voting on what we decide next Thursday, which would then give you the time you need to be able to continue forward. Everybody agree with that? Okay. So I think we have at least a pathway for this.
I second that.
I just have, I have one comment about the school start times. We did do that before in this school, and it didn't work very well. And the problem, one of the problems was that other schools weren't doing it. The real world doesn't seem to care. But the other thing is, parents were concerned that their high school kids were coming home after their younger kids. And that was a problem because they wanted, if anything, that the high school kids would be home first to be able to do some interim babysitting until parents got home. I just want to make that comment in regard to student wellness, letter A.
Thank you, sir. One of the things that's really awesome about our county is the superintendents, the IU, in direct support has, we've had this dialogue for the last couple of years, and we all understand that the, how impactful it is on students, on families, on dance lessons, on all kinds of things, doctor's appointments, and just standard routine. So the idea of having our own community committee, besides you all bringing you the research, having a community discussion, the IU is forming a team of communities across all 13 school districts. We're talking upper bucks in particular on start times because of the tech school, that's impactful. Remember, when we came in here, we changed, my 14, 15 school year, we changed the start time there because our students had 25 minutes per day, less than everybody else, the other two districts. And we changed the start time to make sure that, I mean, if you add up all those minutes, that's weeks of less instruction. So, you know, there is a lot of stuff going into it. So we're, I understand there's a lot of people around here with history, so thank you.
Okay.
One more quick question, I'm sorry. If we had, I just noticed it said February, the results of that committee, and I think it's a great idea to have a committee because you get to all the factors of it. Would we have enough time to implement that for the following year at that point? No, right? You wouldn't.
Probably not.
Probably not, so, well, what do you?
Talking to the other superintendents, the idea is they're all having most, or at least, I sent out the email last week as we were talking about this, or maybe it was earlier this week, and out to all the superintendents on our little listserv, and we've, at least seven of them are having community committees and looking at doing it for the 2021 school year, if there's a change.
Because I noticed one school district, and I can't recall which one, they just flipped it to where they had the high school students going, basically, we have three time slots at this point, and then they just switched them around. I believe the way they did it was the high school was going around 8:30, middle school 7:50, elementary school 9 o'clock, or something like that. And that would actually alleviate some of the problems that Mitch answered.
Yes, ma'am, but it sounds like the times you just gave me that it's a two-tiered system. We're on a three-tiered system which requires less buses. Two-tier would cost us an extra million.
Would it be two, though? Because all you're doing is swapping the three tiers that we have now. You're swapping those times.
I thought your times were pretty, I'm sorry.
8:30, 7:50, 9. Too close.
So that would have to be a too close.
Then just taking the three times we have now.
Well, there's a lot of discussion on that.
Anyway, right, but I just thought I would ask anyway.
I think it would be prudent on our community's part to have this open dialogue because if the other districts are seriously thinking about doing it, then we would be behind the power curve.
Agreed. All right, we're going to move away now from the 2019-2020 goals discussion. All right, we have some information items, the board briefing book, if anybody's interested, is out there. So is the May SRO report and the senior high school May 2019 suspension reports. There are no communication items that I see. That brings us to board comment and new business. And to get this started, if I may, first of all, I would like to thank Scott Gotchak for a wonderful job at the Nightig groundbreaking ceremony that you did, sir. Gary wrote a great article about it, but you were wonderful. Those of you, Ms. Mitchell, that attended, you gave a great speech, thank you for that. Dr. Horner, as always, you know, you did a great job there. And everybody else that I saw there, I thought that was a great event, and we got it in before the tornadoes.
I thought it was, Ms. Mitchell was awesome tying in the habits, Covey's habits into her speech. She outshined us all from up here at the board.
Yes.
Sorry, Tim, you did a great job.
They do not want to listen to me, so I'm going to make it interactive, so, thank you, it was a lot of fun.
Secondly, based on an earlier discussion, I would like to ask that the Act 153 presentation that we heard today gets referred to the Finance Committee for evaluation. And then we'll make a, you know, we'll make a decision whether or not to adopt that and pass the resolution, okay? So that's all I have, does anybody else have any board comments? Now, there is, thank you.
I heard the dirt preparation was really well done.
Yeah, Rob. There is one item on the agenda under this section, by the way, and this is the Quakertown Elementary as a Community Eligible Provision, a CEP, school with regards to breakfast and lunch. There is a considerable write-up here. Can somebody give just a quick synopsis on this, or?
I can do that. This was a topic at a prior Finance Committee meeting. The state has the, what you just read, the Community Eligible Provision. So a school or a school district who has 40% or above free and reduced, or free status, I'm sorry, it's not free and reduced, free status is eligible for this. When we originally started talking about it at the Finance Committee meeting, we thought our QE free level was much higher, and it's just because we calculated differently than what the state requires for this provision. So we thought it might make sense at the time, and the Finance Committee asked my team, myself and my team, to look into it. Since then, we found out the state calculates this number based on only direct certification. So what that means simply is, so if a family's on food stamps, that is directly certified through the district, the state sends us that information. What it doesn't count is families that qualify based on their weekly income. So long story short, based on the new percentage, which, where we believe we're at now, we actually would lose money, which we didn't think would originally be the case. So we're looking at probably a $30,000 loss in revenue if the board would adopt this, which doesn't sound a lot, but again, you've got to think about that in the context of this is this lunch fund, not the district general fund, so we would put them into a deficit for the year. So that's where we're at, it's informational, there's no action tonight, it's something the board could still consider. We would have to actually apply with the state and make sure our numbers are accurate, and they would have to analyze that, so.
You're still looking at it, then?
Well, from our perspective, we're done.
You're done, okay.
Our analysis is done. It's whether or not the board would actually move forward with it, which would have to happen next week if you voted to do that, because we would have to actually apply after the fact.
Well, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't seem like it would make sense to do so.
Financially, at this point, my thoughts are that it does not, but we would watch this closely year after year to see if there becomes a point where it does. But that's up to the board to decide ultimately.
Your synopsis was much better than me reading what's written there, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Shuck on that? Okay. Any other new board business?
I just want to say congratulations to Dr. Hoffman. I was on WFMZ, everybody, I don't know if you saw the article that was written about her, but she was selected as one of 20 women leaders chosen to participate in the American Association of School Administrators National Women's Leadership Consortium.
Outstanding.
That's pretty cool.
One of the things, one of the things I'd like to add to that, her instructor was my mentor back in the 90s. When I was still in the service, I was working on my doctorate and my superintendency practicum. As a lot of the folks out here have shadowed me, I was shadowing the person who is the Deputy Executive of the National Superintendent's Organization, who leads this instruction. I got an email from her and I said, this is the person to apply. And it's awesome, she's got the best trainer out there. It's a national, is it 19 of you? 19 from across the country participating, only 19.
Wow.
Really cool, and I know the instruction she's going to have and the collaboration with her peers is going to be first rate. But that person, hey, my dissertation's about her instructor, it's leadership, and back in her district back in the 90s.
So, is it math? Yeah, you're up. So just some quick math, $27.1 million divided by 190 desk is $135,000. Just wanted to let everybody know.
But we only get to use the school for a year?
Hold on a second, what? Say that again?
$135,000 a desk is how much 190 desk is costing us.
But you have to realize that it's not only, you're, I think it's not necessarily a fair statement because you're not taking into account the entire renovation that's taking place without including those desks. It's not just about the adding the desk, it's about renovating.
Refurbishing a part of the school that's there.
Which is more expensive, no, the entire school.
Did anybody ever talk about building up? Did anybody ever talk about that?
We are building up.
More up? We're building on a second floor, could we put on a third?
We have.
It's cheaper to do that, was that ever on the table?
No, we talked about all of this, trust me. I mean, there are certain scenarios where that wasn't possible.
There's also height restrictions from the borough, there's height restrictions for buildings in the borough.
Sure.
Yeah, and I mean, look, I appreciate, it's painful because none of us, well, I shouldn't say none of us, a lot of us didn't make the decision to close the schools, like, I get it. But we should stop perpetuating that it's, we're paying that much just to add those desks because we're also bringing to date a school that is, has not been renovated in how many years?
It's good that we gave away two schools, then.
19, what, 87?
So I just wanted, I just wanted to make a statement and everybody got on defensive.
This is about Nightig, this is about the Nightig renovation.
My math was right.
The real shocker is how much do we pay per student? Every year, for the past however many years, I've been like $21,000 a student.
I also, using my time, I also wanted to point out that there are several music providers that are in the area. We did provide the suggestion for one through the district, which I have nothing against in any way, but please support your mom and pop shops, also for those musical rentals. And then I wanted to just ask real quick about this swipe-in system. I've heard it mentioned only tonight, I've never heard a thing about it to any capacity. Obviously, it had to be approved by someone, can somebody tell me something about it, please?
Dr. Hoffman, well, she's been working at the high school the last couple of weeks.
So I can speak with pretty good certainty to the last couple of weeks, but not to before that. So if you have more specific questions, I can get you that information and bring it back. But part of the reason that this was implemented really came out of some safety and security measures about knowing which students are in the building at any given time. It's a system that's used in a variety of other school districts. We went and visited other school districts who used it. I believe Joe did some technology work with other districts who were using it as well, and I did some site visits, as did Dr. Finerty, just to see how it would work. So basically, the idea behind it is that it does connect with our student information system. Every student comes into the building, swipes into the system in a variety of ways. You can use your student number, and a lot of the students, which is really quick, have it now on their cell phone, so they just walk in, scan it like you're paying for something almost, and keep walking. It is amazing, actually, how quickly the students do move through it. And even just in a couple of days, you know, we have a real accurate count now in Power School of the number of students who are in our building.
So there's one in each door or one in each hallway?
There are several in the building, I think we did ask for another one because we found, it just came in today, because we found that there are certain entrances where there were more students coming in than we had previously thought. But the biggest piece of it that is really, not just for the safety, but for the reducing of time of students waiting, is when students are late, so that's when everybody comes into the building. But previously, when a student was late to school, they would come into the office and they would wait for someone to be able to physically sign them in, write them a pass, change their attendance in Power School. change their attendance in Power School, and then send them off to class. Now, if they're late to school, they walk in, they scan in, pass prints for them automatically, their attendance is already put in, and they show up at their class. So it is really putting students into class much quicker. In the same regard, we have a student who maybe is getting an early dismissal for a doctor's appointment. They walk into the office, they scan themselves out, obviously it doesn't print a pass or anything, but it updates their attendance, so that if we were to have, you know, any type of a, you know, God forbid, some kind of an emergency, or just the teacher needs to know if that student is cutting their class, or is not in the building, we have now a more accurate record, because previously, they would have signed out in a book, and it may have taken a day or so for someone to get through that list of students and log the attendance. So now, when we're sending reports home at the end of the day for parents that say, your student's not in school, we, we're pretty sure that the accuracy is going to be, you know, much improved, because what would happen before is, maybe a student was late, the teacher forgot to go back in and change that attendance, the parent gets a call, says your child's not in school, and it sets off of, well, I sent them to school, or they got on the bus, what happened? Well, now we know, you know, because the student has, has signed in. I understand from physically being there in the morning, and some members of my team have also been there helping in the morning, that on the first day, it was, it was a little hectic. I will say, though, that we still had every student signed in by 7:20, 7:21 or 7:22, which is really not a long time, considering it was the first day. And, you know, 7:15 or 7:10 would be our start time. This morning, we had every student through, and that was with one computer having to be restarted, and we still got every student through, so that's only three days. So I personally am seeing that it is, is working, and that students are, I'm standing in the hallway, and I don't hear students complaining about it, I don't hear that it's difficult to get in, they all know their number, but I do, I do understand that some of them maybe could, and my feedback, my note here from the student, is that maybe, and I don't know, because I wasn't there, maybe they weren't told why they're doing it. And so my feedback is for our, you know, to go back to the building and make an announcement, and just thank the students for their participation, and make sure they understand why we're doing it. And my hope is that maybe that would, that they're not just doing it for the sake, we're doing it for their own safety and security, maybe that would help, I don't know.
I didn't know you guys were doing it all, so that may be helpful for them.
I think it's a great idea.
Can you confirm that the purchase of these systems was actually approved by this board in a previous agenda?
It would have been part of the bills list, it's part of the Act 44 grant.
It was part of the Act 44 grant, and it, part of the original discussion of, by having this system in the Act 44 grant, started with Mr. McCucci and his feedback when we had the nor'easter back on March 4th of 2018, when we had that nor'easter, kids were, parents were coming in, the front office was all clustered, and how do you control the gaggle? And quickly, having a system like this, you can quickly move students through the front office.
Was the concept of using this system ever brought before this board?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, this is my point.
I don't remember ever talking about it.
I remember hearing about it, I thought it was like for next year or something.
One of the things, the reason I bring it up is because this happens a lot. I mean, I sat down with my daughter the other night, and she was, she got a text from some of her friends, they were waiting 10 minutes outside of the school in these long lines, she sent pictures on Monday, I mean, it was bad. And she said all her friends were screaming bloody murder, and I said, well, gee, I'm really not sure what's going on either. But my point is, we do a lot of things on this district, and things happen out there in the community, and we get blamed for something happening, and we kind of look like, well, gee, we didn't know it. But a lot of times, we did. Either we did know it, we approved it, we forgot, but it comes back to also to the difference between the administration doing their job and us doing what we're supposed to do, and this is simply a goal of safety and security, and this is the system they used. I understand your concerns, I just, we...
Sir, I just want to know more about it.
We did, we, it was, it was in front of us, we just, you know, just, in one ear and out the other kind of thing, unfortunately.
Well, maybe it's just you vote on this security proposal, and you don't know the ins and outs of what happened behind it, it's probably likely what happened.
My 11th grader told me it was the most stupidest thing we've ever done. So, well, that's cool.
That's what we're aiming for.
That's right.
It's our goal.
I said, well, get into school, make sure you scan on your way in.
If she ever works in a tall office building like I have in a big city, it's much more secure than what we do in the high school, yeah. So, wait till she gets a job. Yeah, really.
I saw the lines, I thought, oh, here comes emails, but it sounds like everybody got in all right.
Dr. Hoffman, I'm just curious, do they have, as part of the swiping system, can they get a card like this, or isn't that?
Their current student ID does have a barcode.
Oh, it does, okay.
The current one, though, the way they were printed, weren't necessarily designed for this, so there's some issues with that, but we're working with the company to do a few more suitable codes for the readers there.
But we also, a system that relies on students remembering their IDs, I think any high school administrator will tell you, is not feasible without some kind of backup. So the app on their phone, and the, or punching in their number, it's good to have a backup, because otherwise, we'd have lots of, and, oops, I forgot my ID, so then we'd have a different kind of line.
Yep.
And I think, I think the other important note is that...
Yes, but how often did the battery die?
A lot.
Yet, see? Right.
The other important note is that the plan for this was to be rolled out in the fall, so the reason that we're doing it now was so that we could find things like the fact that we needed two attendance codes, so we knew when kids were coming or going, or so that we could, you know, verify how many kids could get through in a certain number of minutes. So it's almost like a pilot, in the sense of that, so that hopefully, you know, and obviously, already in three days, we have a lot of those kinks worked out, but that by the start of next school year, it will be, you know, much smoother for students.
Are there any plans to replicate this at other school buildings?
Well, that was actually part of one of our goals discussions at one point, is whether or not we want to look at what, what that might look like for other buildings, but in reality, the attendance at the high school is where things are most fluid, especially because we have students who leave more often midday, or are driving, or maybe going to the community college and things like that. So it's not that it couldn't be helpful in other buildings, it's just that the high school is the building where there's the most movement on a daily basis of students. So that's where it's probably best suited.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Are, is there any more new board business that anybody...
I just had, just one quick thing. One, I just want to appreciate all the building leaders that are here today. My son, Jack, attended the eighth grade dance, and he had a, he had a great time, so he really had a, had a fun time there. I attended Rixland's field day for Cooper, and it was fantastic to see the different things they had the kids doing as far as like teamwork. They had one where they had to take and pour water in a PVC pipe, but the pipe had holes in it, so they had to work together to plug up the holes and go and dump it down somewhere else. And the other one, there was eight kids, but they had four tires, and they had to use it like a bridge to get to the other part of the parking lot, so I thought that was great. And then, anybody who's hungry tomorrow, they're having donuts for Dad, to celebrate Father's Day.
Donuts with dudes, it's donuts with dudes.
And hopefully, hopefully...
At least that's what it is, isn't it?
Yeah, hopefully, we have as much fun as munchkins with Mom. I served the munchkins, that was, that was a good, good turnout, so I really enjoyed those couple of events that we had recently, so, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we had, we had, it was, it's been very interesting trying to get the Nightig concert going, and I have to say, kudos to Scott Gottschalk, who, and Mike Murmelo, who were in the building, everyone gets seated. You guys, we already had to reschedule this concert because of the weather, the tornadoes and everything. We get in there, we get seated in the high school auditorium, and don't you know, a fire alarm goes off. And I was like, this is a joke, right? This is a prank, someone's pranking us. And then we're like, oh crap, this is not a joke. But it really was, I was so impressed by how quickly it happened, it was like 15 minutes, I think, we were out there. The first responders were incredible, incredible, they were there immediately, nearly immediately, so special thanks to those guys as well. But for something so unexpected, I feel like it was handled really, really well, and the kids did an awesome job. My son, first year playing trombone, and it was cool up there seeing him, like, do this, like, you know, head movements and stuff, but it was, I can't say, I think that it was a, it was a situation that could have been a lot worse, like Rob was telling me today, what if it was raining? I was like, that's true, right? So, but yeah, thank you to all the leadership that are here today, and for administrators as well, you probably, you guys probably don't get thanked enough as well, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, that brings us to our general public comment portion of the meeting. I don't see anybody interested in publicly commenting. Dates for board members, we have, of course, June 13th is the Education and Curriculum Committee meeting in Community Room A, and then the meeting that was discussed earlier, work session, regular voting meeting, and now executive session, here at 7:00 PM. And then June 14th is commencement at Stabler Arena, yes, folks, that is next week. Can you believe that?
Best day of the year.
Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Come on in.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning the meeting, say aye. Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.